Six o'clock tonight, Wednesday, May 29th. The first item is, a second item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, Rules of Order. The city council operates under Robert's Rules of Order, except for those items that were modified at our organizational meeting in November of 2023. Item four, Public Hearing in Action on the Following Business License. Jordan Snack Bar Inc., DBA Jordan Snack Bar, 200 Down East Highway for a new City Class C and new state liquor restaurant class 1, 2, 3, 4, no Venice, liquor license, no Venice.
Yes, it's liquor, malt and Venice.
Liquor, malt and Venice liquor license.
And they are here.
And they're here, hi. All right, I will open the public hearing. Does anyone have any comments on this license? No comments, we will close the public hearing. Council?
No approval. Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Item number five, Adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor? All right. Charlie, now you're on.
Yes, indeed, Chair. Yep, so we're got the digital budget book up, draft budget that's now on the website. We're going to go over that in a second, kind of give you an orientation on where we're at. Before we start, though, I'm having some printed books and I do want to have the printed books. I think it'll be a lot easier. So that should be in shortly. But we do have a few things. One is another presentation on the Rec, from the Rec Commission. I'm going to hand that out that we'll go through first.
So this, you said this came through an email?
Um, no. Nope, nope, hard copies are coming in for us.
That's fine.
And then we also have a discussion, some of the reserve accounts that I think are relative to some of the budget pieces that I also want to discuss. So if you take just the, yeah, the top one and the first and this thing, it should be, pass it down. And then we have some updates from Matt on TIF and both an ARPA that are also fairly relevant to the budget that aren't finalized yet. And then hopefully by that time, the budget, full budget books will arrive and the hard copies will be here. If not, the full budget book's already online and I can just, I can take you through it online as well as any digital devices. But they should be ready by then.
Make sure there's, can we make sure that there's copies to all of this for John and Casey? Sorry.
Is there an extra copy of this one?
Yep, we've got plenty of extra copies in there. There you go. I should say, we'll, we'll include this in the actual budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening. I appreciate going first anyways. I have my daughters here, so they're going to get hungry.
I don't blame you, me too.
So my name's Eric Marichal. I presented, I sent this earlier today, so a little bit last minute, but kind of got it in here. The last two pages are pretty much what we presented at the Recreation Budget Workshop. I just put that in there. I want to keep this brief. Didn't think I was going to make it, so I didn't really have a presentation prepared. But this is just what we would think a budget for this new position would look like. Going down to the payroll piece of it, the, we referenced that MRPA quite often. They're the main Recreation and Parks Association. So they provide a document that had a lot of, I think 26 municipalities and what they paid for a recreation kind of position. Some of those were part-time to full-time, anywhere from about 40,000 to maybe 90,000. So as a commission, we had talked about maybe the 60 to 70 range, kind of split that in the middle. So that's where that 65 came from. This whole recommendation is to have a, we talked about in the last meeting, is like a 50% into this budget cycle. That'll give time for the commission and, you know, the city to work out maybe the logistics and of the position, work at this MRPA, let's figure out responsibilities as well as internally and also alleviate some of the burden on this kind of fiscal cycle. So that's where the payroll kind of salary comes from. The rest of this, you probably know better than I do, but I just referenced the current city budget for things like, you know, travel and auto. I saw there's line items for most of the departments, the travel, marketing. I believe Councilmember Stein reached out to the HR person here. I think that's where that number for the insurance kind of benefits came up. So that's, you know, is there probably some more miscellaneous expenses? You know, maybe, I don't know, things like in office and how that would work in the city. But this is the general, I guess, budget that we see for this position. And I think the idea of this position is, it can start off small, right? We just, I think, need someone. Again, as we've talked about in the last presentation, we have 27 own, city-owned or partnered recreational assets. The Norton Park's been a lot of, you know, buzz lately. Sarah's article came out today, which is online right now. Already has 100 comments about the playground. So I think from the public perception, it's kind of a big deal, but that's really just one of many things that are going on. So the idea of this position was, it would take a while to just be able to learn, you know, the different roles in departments, kind of work with facilities, public works as far as maintenance schedules, kind of prioritize what needs to get done. And the article that came out today for the playground, that playground's 19 years old now. The expected life expectancy on these playgrounds is generally 15 to 20 years. And as far as I know, we don't necessarily have a fund or a plan to replace this playground. We paid $90,000 for that 20 years ago. So we're assuming that's doubled at this point. So again, I think, I wasn't here back then, but I believe that jump committee raised almost a million dollars for a lot of that Norton project. So it can be done again, but who is like spearheading that? Who's thinking about that? So I think that's why, you know, adding a new position to any budget or new expenses is kind of a jump. But it seems like a lot of things have converged at this point that makes this almost a necessity. And then one other thing I put in here is, I am also on the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, so I know the number one recommendation from that committee, subcommittee, is this position. You've heard from Arbor Commission, you've heard from the Rec Commission, this MRPA association, local nonprofits, and then most recently, I think, the, the public kind of perception of not having this type of position in place. That's my short pitch. So if you guys have any questions to follow up with or if you had a chance to read this in advance, but.
Any questions?
Just for the, you know, half-year budget. So the idea is someone will probably come on beginning of the calendar year.
That's exactly it, yep.
Yeah.
So give us time to get everything, you know, hiring process, that person ideally would start in January. So, yeah.
For the job description, because that's, you know, one of the things that is missing is like the materials someone would need to do like the actual job. And depending on if it's more like facilities focused, which I think has been.
Rec Commission's goal, or someone who is more program-focused, they'll need materials of some sort to do the job that's outside of that budget right now.
Yep. And I haven't talked to anyone about this, but I was thinking on the way over is, I know there's not a lot of office space here. I know the Moore Center is technically kind of leased out to YMCA, but this person could be working a lot in conjunction with the YMCA because they do, half of our recreation budget currently goes to, you know, the youth sports and other things. So maybe there's a space over there to use potentially. So just a thought.
Yeah. I, this may actually kind of, some of these topics kind of piggyback into some of the things we'll talk tonight, both on Norton Park and some reserve funding that's actually allocated towards jump, towards the, towards the park reserve, which potentially could be considered for moving forward. But also just, you know, the quarter-half budgeting this year, how we're thinking about staff increases. I know one of my pieces of the manager's recommendation is, you know, we have about five staff requests for new administrative assistants that are kind of shared by different departments. I know I've been thinking about it a lot. You know, I've mentioned to you with the 18 direct reports from department heads and there is like some reorganization to meet kind of modern and current needs that it feels like it's due. I've been thinking, I don't think we're quite there at, at least for me personally, with how much time I'm spending in the weeds in finance to make a recommendation on like appropriate staffing levels, exactly where they'd be at. But I have been thinking, two things. One is, in reviewing the budget and past years, you know, we're spending about 100,000 a year in, in stipends, unbudgeted. I mean, they're allowed, you all have passed a stipend as council, but they, they haven't been put in as a specific line item. They're essentially undesignated spending from the year. So that, one of the things we're putting into this year's budget is actually designated, how these stipends are out. But also, I've been thinking about extending that line item really to 250 or 150 that would cover potentially up to three staffers. But there's also various reorganization on, you know, potentially the clerk's office or tax office or other folks could take additional responsibilities and there could be sidebar agreements and thinking, kind of having a placeholder on potential new staff or upgraded positions or additional responsibilities as we look towards the year and not just, we're going to pass this budget and here's five new staffers. I did do an analysis of FTEs in the organization and was actually kind of surprised. And in 2019, there was 95 FTEs.
What's an FTE?
Oh, sorry, full-time employees.
Thank you.
Because, you know, a lot of requests, what's going on? There's 95 full-time employees in 2019. I'm sorry, 96, because they didn't include the city manager when we pulled the numbers. 96 in 2019, there's currently 102. But the six additional from 2019 are all public safety. So the additional of the fire shift. So really, city hall staff has been, hasn't grown at all despite pretty significant service demands. So, you know, I've been hearing from staff and you all have on additional needs and responsibilities. I definitely feel it in the growth and we could consider this as we look forward. You know, we budget for a certain allocated amount for potential staff increases or responsibility increases, but we don't set what those roles are until a later council date. So that was one piece of my manager's recommendation that I think we should consider as opposed to, hey, we're passing six new FTEs, the five recommended plus this. Today, we've set aside a certain amount of budget for potential increase in staffing capabilities and, you know, kind of return to council with a strategic, you know, look towards it. So that's one of the things for recommendation.
Could I, could I build on that or?
Sure.
Excuse me, ask a question, I guess, about it. When this was presented, part of the justification or rationale for it was that these responsibilities are picked up in different departments across. And if there was a way to see if there was consensus among city staff that, you know, how much of Matt's time, how much of the?
Public Works?
Public Works, thank you. Public Safety got stuck in my head and I knew that wasn't what I wanted. But just to give us a sense of what would that do for relieving some of the burden to your point about people? If it pulls off a little bit from a couple of people that helps think through what it would mean to have that position there.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't have those numbers for you, but that's great. I mean, I think.
Well, and even though it's not really a direct question to you, but more like as we're thinking it through.
Right.
I wouldn't expect you to come up with that, but.
I mean, even just my involvement with, I only know Matt from the Recreation Commission, but I know he does, spends a lot of time on the Recreation Commission, which really is just, you know, ideally would just be a staff member that shows up at a meeting and kind of conveys some information, not ordering slides and making signs and doing all this stuff.
So I think to, to your point, Charlie, about kind of reallocating or having some sense of what we can do with staff capacity.
Yeah, it's.
That would be part of the consideration.
You know, especially, I like to take a lot of time with these to, you know, I've done a fair amount of business process redesigns and staffing analysis on what to meet needs and I'm not, I feel like with this budget, I'm not ready to make a recommendation I think we need. But to your point, I have seen a lot of, and I think you see this in the previous request, we'll all share, three of us will share an admin and we'll kind of put, and there's been a lot of that, or we'll all share sort of rec duties. Matt, Jana, myself, Adam, Mike, you know, others, but the kind of, it's everybody's responsibility and then it's no one's responsibility too. So I'm kind of getting a lot of that and trying to sort of pull back and, you know, single points of responsibilities, but not single points of failures in the organization. So and how do we create, you know, to meet really the growing needs of the city? I mean, think of all the time we've spent on cemeteries, which I could also see, you know, being in this person's purview of responsibility. So.
Yeah.
Every single beautification, obviously another big one. You know, because when Jana or my time or Matt's time is on that, it's not on us grant planning. It's not on us, you know, on business attraction plan, on comprehensive plan. And especially with doing the FTE analysis and seeing, especially in the city hall staff, there's really been net zero growth. It's, it does seem like we need some additional staffing support to manage some of this.
I think that's a good way to be. I mean, I, like, the job, you know, sort of gets done. We met with Jim and, you know, he does a good job maintaining stuff as it breaks and whatnot. But in general, we're just being, you know, reactive. We're not really being proactive in any way. So if this is an investment, then we can start getting grant funding. We can start doing preventive maintenance. So yeah, you're spending more money, you know, this year, but the outcome to have that kind of oversight in the long term and being proactive, I think, will benefit us.
That's a good phrase to remember. Fixing things when they break.
Yeah.
Is, is the strategy.
Exactly.
Maybe we can do better.
Yeah.
The other thing to throw out there, not to, had flat staffing numbers, but everybody's pay has substantially increased. So even though they have a flat staffing number, but the, the pay has had to continue to go up to make a living wage for people. And, and I'm not disputing anything that you're saying. As a matter of fact, I would think this one position would probably refocus a lot of other positions, like Matt. But, you know, if we've got 100 people, what they were earning in 19 and what they're earning today is, is a big difference. And that's got to play into that somewhere, for sure. But to, to your point, you know, refocusing existing staff and adding this position, it, it seems to me like this position might get dumped on like the highway department gets dumped on a lot, but maybe that's what we need.
Yeah, it could be a, that you add to the highway department. I talked to Adam and, you know, again, when, yeah, the salaries have increased, which I think, you know, in some ways not even in line with inflation, especially from the government's specter. But the duty increase is pretty dramatic, too. You know, these budget increases, you see them year over year. I think when we talked before, the police, you know, in the early 2000s are handling about 1,000 calls a year. Now they're at 8,000 plus. We didn't, 8X are, are size of the city. But the demands on government services, homelessness for Tina, for example, right? You know, that just exploded. We'll talk about that in the budget in a second. You know, there's a lot of systemic factors, I think, that are leading to an increase, post-pandemic especially, an increased demand on government services that are, and Ellsworth has grown and is continuing to grow, so.
Does, does this fit into your vision as you see this in the next year, two years, three years? Do you, do you see the value of this person adding this position and refocusing back to some other things with the existing people?
It does, and I think going back to sort of, you know, a proper business process redesign and analysis of, you know, I think it's, it's something that's kind of left behind and it's, you know, it's fourth or fifth on a lot of people's like daily responsibility list. But, you know, I need more, that's which is why, you know, I'm, I'm setting aside some money as opposed to going, I think, HR, 100%. Like, I could give you a 65 bullet point, like duties and responsibilities for an HR specialist. I think that is the one staffer and not a shared between three people. That is one of the organizational pieces that I feel like is a must-have. The other ones on, for example, on a shared public works person to do wastewater water tax reconciliation, some of their admin stuff, other things. Those are responsibilities that used to fall in different parts of the department and have kind of fallen out over the last three or four years. So I'm not quite sure if that's a new staffer request or if that's a change in existing sort of duties and responsibility and an analysis of those duties and responsibilities to see where that property. Same thing with general assistance. There's a request for, you know, a half share in an admin for general assistance. Well, we actually hired an additional town clerk whose job description mentions general assistance. But it didn't quite work out with that person originally and now we pay a stipend to another clerk to general assistance work. So is the solution for the GA a half of admin assistant to share with HR or is it to analyze the sort of duties and responsibilities and where they've been, make sure they're rightly there? And these are union employees now too. So if you have to, that's just a tax change for the clerk's office. So if you're changing substantially somebody's duties and responsibilities, it's a union negotiation change. So maybe it's not a staff increase. Maybe it's a, you know, a wage increase in their hourly wages to cover X responsibilities. And then there's a few of these other areas of the tax reconciliation in general we talked about. That's sort of another duty that's not. So for me, from an organizational design perspective, you know, I wish I could, I would want to come to the table saying, hey, these are the critical points that are being unaddressed, that are not priorities and that we need to like reassign. Some of that would be through, you know, clarification of duties and responsibilities as, as negotiated with union or as in people's contracts who are not unionized and making, to optimize what we have in-house. Some of those, I think, will be potential new responsibilities and new positions that would need to be budgeted for. But, you know, I also don't like to mislead people that I know that now. That's, it's something that's going to take, I think, once the finance piece is, is such a critical piece, is running very efficiently. I think for me as a team, as a strategic organization, we can start looking towards that, towards this fiscal year. And like, I liked your kind of half budgeting here so that we can come back to the table, you know, budget for it, that it could be potentially an additional 150,000 across the board. But maybe two staffers and duty increases for X union staff that are currently here, you know, negotiated. And then bring that to council for your, also things like, we had a public works director. There's no public works director anymore, sorry.
No, that's okay. I'm sorry, I just, you are just standing there listening to us deliberate. I am really sorry and you've got, your daughters are hungry.
That's right. So yeah, if you're nothing else, then I appreciate your time, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry, I just was.
No worries, that's, great. Yeah, we know, we used to have a public works director here. That's a piece that, you know, again, we're now under shared responsibility, but not a single point of responsibility over the overarching shared vision. So maybe that to consider. There used to be Deputy CD Manager here. Sitting two seats away, that, something I really wanted to present in this one, to kind of take, take this pressure off my giant checklist. I'm not quite yet, you know, fiscally, is that what we should do? I'm also not thinking about backfilling my admin assistant. I do think that more of in a comms role is going to be such a big value add to the organization that, you know, I'd be willing to kind of hold off on the admin assistant and potentially, you know, continue to elevate.
Thank you, Ken.
Portions of the team and the executive leadership function to kind of handle some of my additional response or my responsibilities that are, you know, putting so much into finance and some of these other things that are, are there. But it takes a, you know, that's a couple PowerPoints and a couple weeks of thinking about it, too, so. But before we get there, you know, they're getting still printing out. We do have two or three additional things we wanted to discuss with you. One is, I'll start with the reserve accounts, which is this page. So Nate, I know we'd made a previous discussion of kind of where we are, our kind of cash position and, you know, general burn rates. You know, we're thinking around 2.7 million is kind of where we might end up the fiscal year. And this, but this is another reserve account that was not originally accounted for, which has about 1.355 million in reserve. And there are, I know, credit goes to Mike Charis as we were looking through this as part of the budget process and going through line items, we were like, hey, like, there's a bunch of these things that are tagged in that reserve account that we may want to consider using instead of tax dollars. And I kind of highlighted, well, the wastewater reserve at the top shouldn't be there, but I highlighted a fair amount of them that they, you know, if we wanted to expend some of these line item reserves, you know, you could be looking at a half a million off of this year's tax rate towards projects that are already really currently in our budget if we wanted to consider that. Norton Park Reserve, and this was kind of to your story today. Sarah, was, there's two things that kind of jumped out at me there is the Norton Park Reserve plus number 15, the jump playground of 25,000. You know, that's, you're looking at almost 40,000 there. I know some of that maybe go towards fixes, but we could start to sort of seed funding the maybe additional upgrades. It's such a critical piece. I know a person who works in our finance office is across the street from it and that place is jumping in the summer and even at night, she says, there's people there and our seniors use it and it's a very utilized area.
Yeah, it's a huge asset for the city.
So there's 40,000 here, we have 20,000 in the budget. There's also, I think, I looked into this, the, tagged a lot of things in the budget for ARPA, which we'll go through. We potentially with the interest, we might have around 100,000 additional and that could be something that is ARPA eligible for specific parts of Norton Park upgrades? If we wanted to consider that for shelters, for accessibility, for lighting, for, there's a whole range of things[1549.28] for, there's a whole range of things. In the recreational, there's like a subsection that we could dive deeper onto if the council wanted to. I know previous conversations had talked about this, to kind of pool these resources, plus the sort of remaining ARPA. At the same time, you know, that would be, that ninety-eight thousand could be done for things like roads that would decrease the tax rate. But if you're looking to, you know, address an issue which is pretty pressing with a substantial amount, you know, ARPA plus these reserves could cover, you know, the more community center reserve, you know, we're budgeting twenty thousand for it this year, we could clear this account in Budget thirteen, some of the road improvement reserves. You know, as we mentioned before, there's a lot of encumbrances that haven't happened, so there was, you know, a fair amount that wasn't addressed in previous years.
So can I just, so reserves aren't made to balance the budget. Reserves are made for emergency situations. So I understand what you're saying, but, I mean, to clean out a reserve and have no plan on putting it back is just, I mean, that's a, that's a point of failure, because what it's supposed to be like, in the middle of the year, when the slide broke, there's money there to fix that slide, and then you work through your budget to replace the money. So I, two things. I really, and the jump playground and the Norton Park Reserve, you know, we did raise money, the city also, for the Norton Park, and the city also put money into it, but money was set aside from the donated funds to fix things or to expand, you know, something that didn't get done, or for any emergency situation, so that the playground always looked nice. But there was also, if we use it, then we replace the money future on, so that we never have these accounts go to zero. Because, you know, we could spend all this, and then what happens is something happens this summer, and, you know, the splash pad goes down. We don't have any reserve to work with that. So I understand using maybe some of it, if like, we have like, I know that the slide needs to be fixed, but to make these reserves go to zero to balance a budget is not the meaning of having a reserve account. And also, the reserves for the school department in here aren't in here, that we gave them last year. I wonder where that money needs to...
And this is a...
We gave them four reserves last year, and the money's not showing on this account.
It might be in their own accounts, so I can...
They're supposed to have their own reserve accounts?
So...
They're not supposed to be...
And not to, you know, yes, I think from, from when you were, and I believe probably Tammy set these up, or they were set up, Michelle may have set them up originally.
I mean, these have been going on forever.
Except for wastewater, like, what you're talking about hasn't happened. So nobody's been funding these, except for wastewater, and a couple others, like, or been drawing from them in those situations that you just mentioned. Like, no reserve was taken for these things, as they were all undesignated spending and then pulling. This, basically, they just kind of held there as they transferred accounts and transferred. So these, I think in some ways were set up as reserve accounts, but then this account was just forgotten about, was sort of put aside and recently...
I think that's probably the... I think that's the problem, is that it was forgotten about, but...
So the question is, for me, to your point, Michelle, is, yeah, and there are cities that do more of a contingency-based, citywide reserve. We don't account for contingencies here. They happen all the time. They've happened five or six times as I've been manager. Whether it's for Avery Lane, whether it's for the Munis expansion, and these accounts are like of such, so I would want to put into the practices of creating a reserve, and I wouldn't draw every single one of these down, but for some of the ones that were, you know, are kind of ongoing expenses and are not, you know, and that could be general fund, is to consider, or we start putting money in these every year, or else, or have it as part of our process.
Yeah, I mean, and some of this is donated funds. That's why it's there. That's the other piece of this, is like, the jump playground, God, and that is, how many years old? I worked on both of those jump playgrounds.
Nineteen.
The one that we have there now is not a jump playground. It's a playground part of the park. Jump playground was a wooden, huge, massive wooden structure.
Oh, so that even predates that.
I thought it was jump two. I thought there...
There was jump one and jump two, yeah. And they were at the school at the time, and now they're, they went away, and I think the school department helped us raise the funds for that playground, because it was there when Norton went away. I can't remember how that worked. That was a while ago. But anyways, that's donated funds, and the remaining money from the Norton Park Reserve is also donated funds, so you can't just spend these down. Again, because there was a purpose for it to be there.
What would be the process for using them?
Yeah, so...
You couldn't use them to replace the broken equipment?
Well, you could, on an emergency, yes, on an emergency situation, but I mean, not to balance the budget. You know what I'm saying?
No, but that's what, and for me, yeah, but to, there's kind of two pieces of this. One is like a reserve, wastewater reserve, I think, is the appropriate way to sort of establish these reserve accounts. And for highway, I think would be another one, where you'd want to get to that three, four hundred thousand dollar level. So if something really big in our highway, or that we'd have that contingency, or for wastewater or water, from some of the smaller ones that have just sort of sit there and languish for, like, this jump, which doesn't even, you know, so how do we use that money for the jump playground, which no longer, you know, like, I think it is worthy, and like, for the employee benefit liability, seventy-one thousand, I was really glad to see that, because we have a lot of PTO, employee benefit liability. But we haven't been funding those accounts as real reserves.
Isn't that, isn't that the unemployment, Tammy?
Yes.
That's the unemployment. We have to have that, because we fund our own unemployment.
So that's our unemployment piece?
Just in case there's like a huge case that we're not going to fund through the...
So we're self-funding?
We used to be required. Are we still?
Wait, are we self-funding our unemployment, or would you...
We're self-funding unemployment.
Okay, so that, say that we would have to have that.
So I don't mean to be derogatory, but I just want to say, I just, I don't, I don't think, I don't think it's a good idea. It's really robbing from Peter to pay Paul, and I just, if we're going to bring the city to a really good financial stability and increase our bond rating again, we need to have reserves and to show that we're being fiscally responsible with our money. And I mean, in, so like, if we do have something that goes, we've got money that we can pull from. And what should be happening, and maybe once we get everything reconciled, is you take a piece of your fund balance every year, and you put it into reserves.
So it goes from undesignedated to designated, which is what it says.
I think because these accounts have been unused for the past several years, that, you know, when something does happen, like a contingency with highway, we pull it from the general fund as opposed to this reserve account. And so, in that way, what Charlie's saying, I think that that's how you kind of, it's going to take time to see how much you actually would use the reserve account with all these contingencies recently, but...
But you always put it back.
Right.
That's the thing. I mean, so if you have, you just haven't gone through the cycle, but you wouldn't, you wouldn't, the thing is, is you wouldn't ever take that reserve and make it zero and leave it at zero. You would, in the next year, you would fund it through your fund balance and put the money back.
Right, but then, it's just like we're using it in real time from the general fund instead of using the reserve account, so that particular fiscal year looks heavier.
Right, until the next year when you put it back, yeah.
Steve said, Steve's got his pen.
I think something to remember is, we're trying to hit the reset button on the finances here in Ellsworth, because it's been a known disaster. And I think what I'm hearing is, if you did take some out of the reserves, it's almost replenishing what you have taken, what should have come out of here originally, but has been coming out of the general fund, is what I'm hearing. And I understand both sides, but if you've been sloshing around the general fund for things that should have come out of reserve, I think a one-year reset, I'm not saying zero, I'm not saying everything, but if there's a plan to properly use these going forward with a new mindset for the finance department, then just, I'd like to just say that this is a reset year. This is a disaster. We've all got blinders on while we're sitting here. And this information is more than I have seen in my three years here.
I would say the blinders are coming off.
I would say.
No, but we're sitting here with blinders.
This is the first time we've seen this.
Right, I haven't seen this in three years, and I applaud what's happening here. And we're in a time of, last year, we hit everybody with a big tax increase, and if there's been money sitting here that should have been used for other expenses, let's say a slide, whatever, in the playground, and we've been using it out of the general fund and taxing people for it, maybe there's a balance between your thought and your thought in this one year with a future plan in place to kind of reset this situation.
Totally. And maybe this is some conversation Tammy and Michelle and you and I can have a kind of a strategic analysis, because reserve funding is, you're right, we should, like, the way Mike's been doing it with wastewater and putting aside stuff every year, like, it would have been great over that, that every major department would have that piece. Planning probably doesn't need a reserve. But since, that we also just kind of analyze where these pieces fall, that, you know, is this the right appropriate reserve? What do we want to start using as a reserve policy? Because some cities, they carry about ten percent of their, of their budget as their total reserve. It's beyond three million dollars for us, and this is one point three. That's not nearly enough to cover.
So that is addressed in the fund balance policy. And there were years and years that we tried to budget, like, twenty thousand dollars a year just to put into these reserves, but because we were trying to be, keep the budget rate low, those were actually ones that kept getting cut. So I think if we need to, as, as council, to make sure we're moving ahead in that same direction, to definitely, we know it's going to increase the budget by point zero zero two mils, but, you know, I think it is important for us to put some reserves in.
I agree. And if we're going to use these to balance the budget, which just kills me, then we need to have a plan of putting the money back.
Yeah.
Just like, like I said, and I know that we've been using the general fund to pay these bills, but you would be doing that anyways, because it's for emergency situations, and you put it back at the end of the year from your general fund. So it just hasn't gone through the process, but as long as you, as lo, I mean, I don't mind, as long as we have a plan that we're going to put that money back, so that we can build these reserves and not deplete them.
Yeah, and so many more.
And we can't use some of them.
And I also think this is part of the encumbrancing reconciliation, like, you know, when we get to that point where, okay, this is, this is what's encumbered, this is our cash analysis, this is, we might potentially have enough, we might not, we might be, and we've talked about, I know, last council meeting about bonding for some of our capital pieces, and considering that as part of an overall strategic financing plan, all of which are worthy of consideration. I mean, maybe, I, you know, we'll do this kind of discussion with Tammy, so I can get a little more aligned on, you know, and Michelle, our origination, certain things on, hey, like, this is of a level, you know, we don't want to just have what happened before, which is they sit there for four years and they're not even utilized as a real reserve. And where are these at? Where do we want to get them to? Because, yeah, general fund balance of one hundred and ninety-seven thousand is a reserve, like, really isn't, you know, we're, we might do a lot more than that, but...
I think, you know, there's also, now this tool is like available to staff, and like, more aware of it, you know, like, there are situations that are already happening where we pulled from the general fund, or maybe we would have pulled from these reserve funds if they were available, it's like during the storms when we have to make repairs, but we're getting reimbursed from FEMA for a lot of that, so I could go back into the reserve account instead, even though it was pulled from the general fund, but it won't hit the taxpayer ever, you know, for those, the original general fund pools being reimbursed from an outside source. And there's a lot of grants that can work that way. So as long as you're making a plan for how to use these, and then fill them back up, is probably a good next step.
And that should be, because they're made for, they're not, they're not made to help with operating costs at all. They're made for capital one time.
Like, just, yeah, like, emergency.
Do we have a policy, do we have a policy for how to use reserves? I can't...
I feel like there was, I'm pretty sure it's covered in the fund balance policy, which, or ordinance, there's an ordinance for the fund balance. And I'm pretty sure that, because these are designated funds, so it should be covered under there.
Yeah, go ahead. I'd like to hear what you were going to say. We all walked on you.
No, 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 it's fine. And actually, Steve, you kind of said it for me, so, I just, you know, I don't know much about, you know, these reserve funds and how that they operate within the city. But it seems to me there's an, this is an opportunity as we kind of do our financial resurgence, like phoenix rising from the ashes. And we actually know where one point three million dollars exists, and that we have it. You know, balancing Charlie and Michelle is, you know, maybe there's some opportunities here to, this money can be used, whereas, you know, some of these funds, you know, they specifically need to be kept, you know, stayed, kept, you know, left alone, but where others, there may be an opportunity to, do we even need this type of reserve? Do we need thirty reserve funds? I don't know. Maybe we do, but I guess the long way of saying, it's an opportunity to reflect on this, to improve the process, and then from that, if there's money that can be allocated to help, you know, now, then I think it should be. But to Michelle's point, but if those funds need to be, funds that need to be re, you know, refurbished or replenished as we go, we know that, and then, you know, the awareness within the city department. So I don't think it's anything different than what's been said, but I think there's a, there's a balance somewhere in the middle. There's, I think there's a way to kind of get at both.
Yeah, you look at those contributions and just, and with reds, the zeros.
Yeah.
They're just, you know, they're really, really, so, yeah, it's kind of, how do we recouple this to the organization and start budgeting for it? I don't think in this season, we're, you know, going to be positioned to, you know, I had thought about that a lot, do we need to establish more contingency reserve accounting? I think my recommendation is, you know, let's get the reconciliation, know what our actual, you know, where our position is. And then we can see potentially in the next budget season, and maybe do an accounting of, to your point, Patrick, like, what are these, maybe we can, this, you know, the jump, the Norton Park, the basketball court reserve are really more in like, an area where like, hey, like, for the nine thousand, we can take care of the basketball court maintenance. But we actually have a, I want to get a video camera there. I think it'd be important, that might be...
But that, and that reserve is, that reserve, again, was set aside for the basketball courts in case something fell down, or, you know, it wasn't for maintenance of it or anything like that. It was if something happened to it, and the money's there to immediately fix it. And in order to keep these things, so that they constantly looking good, I'm looking at the one for the tennis courts, and that was set aside by the school department to be able to keep those courts looking nice and, you know, working well and everything. And of course, they depleted it and never put the money back. So now the courts need to be fixed again, and there's no money set aside to do it. So we're in a, you know, capital issue with that. And this is what those were meant to be, is setting them aside, fixing things, making sure they stayed well, and not bring regular upkeep. Unfortunately, they, it doesn't look like a lot of them ever got replenished.
Yeah, yeah, I wish, or utilized in that way, so essentially it was just, you know, one point that we probably could have been better just invested in a much higher interest rate, and that would have kicked off a lot more money for us as an investment for the city.
They're also supposed to be triple A rated investments, because this is taxpayer money and donations. I don't know what they're, what they're invested in, but...
Yeah. So food for thought, I'll circle back with council on kind of, you know, on what to, taking the guidance here, but just want to make you all aware of this as we kind of finalize this, this process, so.
One more question. I know there's been conversation earlier about libraries different, but there's a library reserve account that needed to be counted for, so to speak. So is that something that is on a different report somewhere?
Yeah, the library actually has control over it. Like, I don't even know if the...
The fund eighty, and that's more relative to reconciliation.
Okay. So I know that it's there, I know it's separate, but seeing it would just be helpful to, as we put the pieces together, to your point about if there are other, because some of these things are listed in the school department, but you said there's others as well, because all of them, I don't think they add up to ten thousand dollars total, and that's not the full story.
These are actually literally pulled out of our account and set into a separate...
I understand. It's a separate, I totally get that.
That fund eighty is just a separate fund in our general ledger, right?
It's a special revenue account, so that would be like grant funds, and so that's actually separate from here. It's fund forty. This is fund forty, right?
For the library, I thought it was fund eighty.
Library is fund eighty.
Library is fund eighty, sorry. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, donation, so it's like, yeah, somebody says, hey, I want to donate to a children's book collection, and six hundred dollars. The problem with reconciliation is when you don't have a to-date accounting, you know, Sarah can't say, I want to spend six hundred dollars of this, because you don't know that you have it. It's not there, and that needs to be done, like, you know, it's part of the due-to-do from, so that's a separate piece.
Because we have the cemetery fund, that's separate, that's separate from this, because it can be invested, that one can be invested in stocks and...
It should be part, it should be separate part of this. I think at one time, we had them all invested in the same bank, so like, it was the reserve funds and the cemetery funds.
I actually think there's a second page to this that does have the cemetery.
It does, okay.
They're just invested differently.
It would be great to have, this is wonderful, and then to get the whole picture, just so that we understand.
Indeed. That on two additional things, while I think they're hopefully not just still staring at the printer, but Matt's going to go over ARPA, a continuation of the conversation we've had, and we'll go from there.
I'll probably start with TIF, because for ARPA, I'll want to go to that, so you can use the budget page for it.
All right, TIF.
So we'll start with the TIF worksheet, which is just a long, tall one. So these are the TIF numbers for FY twenty-five. There are two numbers that could, well, one that will change and two that could change. One of the ones that will change is under expenses for the economic development department budget. That number will be going up, in order to kind of help with the tax rate. Some of the things that I budgeted for in planning, we're going to move to be paid fully through TIF, because it's shared projects with economic development. So moving money out of my budget, moving it into the economic development budget. So that number will go up slightly. And the second number that could change, and it's an option for you and Charlie to have a conversation with, is the senior housing TIF two and three more center expense. It's kind of highlighted, kind of hard to tell with black and white, but that is the full money we're getting from both senior housing TIFs. So that's, you know, as if we put all the money out, but to the more center, so the two things that get paid out of our senior housing TIFs, it's two agreements that pay back the developer with the TIF funds. And then there's the more center debt that we've been paying off with the senior housing TIF. So what we're collecting after paying out the agreements and paying off what our scheduled more center debt is, it's about thirty-three thousand dollars more. So we'd have like thirty-three thousand dollars in income. The number here is as if we just overpaid on that debt this year, using all the funds to pay off that debt, or we would have thirty-three thousand dollars to do something else within that TIF district, which is around Norton Park, Leonard Lake, senior housing, Moore Center. That's another conversation again for...
Is it that flexible? We could do...
You have to do infrastructure improvements to that TIF district, but that includes like improvements to Norton Park, and could include improvements to the Moore Center, or if it were more money, maybe you'd do some type of like infrastructure upgrade, like road or water or something, but...
So what is CEA?
Credit enhancement agreement.
Yeah, credit enhancement agreement.
Oh.
I was trying to figure out which housing development that was.
I was trying to think, too. I was like, oh my gosh, I got it.
So that's just an option for you all to kind of think about and discuss, that there is like about thirty thousand, a little bit more than thirty thousand dollars, and that's currently sitting in that more center expense to overpay for the debt this year, but it could be used for something else.
Is there something else with that money that, that's been proposed in the budget?
No, because it was kind of something we figured out this morning, but...
You updated that yet?
For me, you know, I don't know if it's karmic, or, you know, I hate to contradict myself too many times. I've been wanting to use, kind of drawn down current expenses to the extent possible to limit the taxpayer piece, but, you know, seeing the Norton Park Reserve, the zoo piece, the story today about like that area, how critically used it's for, plus, I think this, one of these areas could be used for senior accessibility and Norton Park-type things, you know, you would get to a pretty substantial figure between those pieces of the reserve. You've already, we've already budgeted twenty thousand for Norton Park. You could even keep a, you know, new city appropriation there, and make a pretty significant investment for this council in Norton Park. I know, the recommissioned person was just talking about how much that place needs investment, so that could be considered if the council wanted to go that route. investment, so that could be considered if the council wanted to go that route.
So the 20,000 for Nolan Park, is that for repairs?
Yeah, that's exactly, kind of what's...
It's not operational?
No, it's for the, you know, yeah, for continued repair, there were some put in last year for it, so continue to do repairs on that side of things, so, so plus the additional ARPA money, which, you know, I, I think when we, there are five budget books are printed, six is gone now, so we'll get it in a sec, for in a second, and we'll actually still talk on Matt's ARPA piece, but we've designated, or he's helped us designate what I think is in current budget, which is ARPA, to lower the tax rate, or use ARPA instead of tax funds for it. There's some potentials that left over on non-specific items that also could go to potentially something like this, there's a specific section in ARPA for this type of shelters and shades and lighting and accessibility, and if you wanted to make another investment through ARPA in Nolan, you know, at that level.
I would just say, if you're going to use ARPA for recreational facilities, you have to show that it's serving predominantly low-income residents, which Leonard Lake Housing is right there, so it wouldn't be impossible, but like the playground might be a harder sell, but like accessible walking paths or lighting or something like that would be.
Signage.
It's within the, the district, though.
It's for TIF, yes, but for ARPA, that doesn't, that's...
That's what I was saying, there's TIF on the, yeah, that side of things, there's ARPA, which might be able to designate, there's a little bit of the zoo, or the jump playground.
I was going to say you were saying zoo, and I was...
Sorry, jump, not zoo.
Didn't know we had a zoo in town, so.
Depending on, you know, certain ones.
I always wondered what you meant by zoo, two of my friends.
I thought you might have said new zoo, yeah.
I've been, I've been so deep into Excel sheet.
No, no, I don't think so.
Zoos aren't vegan, Patrick.
So I have a question, I'm seeing this is fiscal year 2025 budget with revenue expenses balance, are we going to see these expenses when we see, will this translate to the budget so that we know?
Yeah, we just had, this spreadsheet was outside of Excel, and so it didn't come out.
So this is a, this is a summary of what we will see in the budget?
Yeah, Nate will build this into the digital budget book.
Thanks.
So I'm sorry, and I've got to ask another dumb question, but workforce, housing, school?
Yeah, so for the credit enhancement agreement for the Oriole Way workforce housing, that split is designated to go to, back to the developer, and then also for funds for the school, so the school is who gets half of that through the credit enhancement agreement.
So CEA means money going back to the developer?
Yes, essentially, yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
And the other thing you could do with the income, if you didn't want to do a specific project, or, you know, and we'll show you in the budget, some of the specifics that we're planning on using TIF for this year, but the third, you could also keep it around, and Jan, I think wants me to mention this, is just as surplus funding for a new TIF that like, or that are developers, so you could have your CEA and fund them with a project or help them get the ball rolling on something. So, you know, it's...
Yeah, so that's in the overall, the 212-597, which is the remainder, there are projects we can spend that money on for, through the economic development TIF, that, I have a list of some of the ones that, you know, we've all been talking about, but Jan's recommendation is leave 80 to 100,000 in there in case the developer comes forward and needs assistance with the, or wants TIF assistance with the development, and you have that ready to go. And so, yeah, I guess I can talk about some of those other projects. So aside from the increase from the budget for economic development by moving planning, the shared costs from planning there, there's discussion on maintenance to the rail trail, there need to be new pins and locks for bollards, fence replacement, and some drainage work done, and we would, we need to get an estimated cost for that, but we're pretty confident that we, not quite so overwhelming, public works can do a lot of the drainage work, I've talking to Adam, the fence replacement, they can do just buying materials, so it wouldn't be that high of a cost. And the part of local roads, presentation this year was industrial roads paving, which is a relatively small paving project, but it's in a TIF district, so we can use TIF funds to complete that paving project, and move it out of the local roads budget, and or free it up, I guess, for other road projects. We also need an estimate cost for that, but Adam doesn't think it should be too expensive. The Branch Lake Forest Bridge, currently the tote road has washed out multiple times in the past year due to storms. Currently, the tote road does not fully extend to the parking lot anymore, the Branch Lake Public Forest, because of a washout, because of beavers and just the water levels in this one specific part of the road. We believe it's best to build a bridge instead of having just dirt and gravel road there. And so engineering for that would be a project we'd like to move forward on. And then we just put other stormwater kind of where, stormwater isn't our current TIF plan, it's something that we know we're focusing on with, or in current, we're out the presentation for it, that's another option of, we're going after congressional delegated spending for stormwater, the focus area one's already fully funded, so it's a priority still, but, you know, like if other things cost more than we think, stormwater could wait, but it's another option to spend TIF money on.
Is Frenchman's Bay Conservancy still helping with the Branch Lake Forest?
They hold the conservation easement, and if we spoke to them about, I mean, which we probably would, if we move forward with the bridge project, bring them in on it, but we do the boundary survey with them every year, but maintenance is still on the city.
We're doing, we're, we've got bugs coming in, we were doing, they were doing, helping with maintenance on that, but they're not doing that anymore?
Since I've been here.
We need like a ceremony and music.
I was talking.
Thank you.
We were here the whole time, which one is dramatic.
This is hours of appreciation.
Yeah.
That is an amazing amount of work, most of our time, most to everybody.
Pretty.
Yeah, and still draft, I mean, I think, I, I do want to start off by, you know, we've got, we're close, and I want to kind of go over especially some of the manager's recommendations, I'll take you through the books, kind of where, you know, my memo, I think the big outstanding ones, we already talked about TIF and these reserves, kind of keep that conversation going. ARPA is another big one, maybe we'll just talk about ARPA when we get to the book piece. Also, like, keep the critiques coming, like, like what we just had this discussion about, like, that was really helpful, I think, for me and for the staff, the back and forth on, you know, on kind of where we're at, I think transparency, collaboration, honesty about where we're at in the budget is super helpful, so that we can kind of get to best practices here. So, you know, we've got some, some work, especially in the highway, wastewater, Adam was out this week, so I didn't get to do my final kind of discussion with him about the manager's recommendations, so highway, wastewater and water, wastewater and water are also enterprise accounts, not as quite closely tied to what the, you know, the taxes are pulling down, the tax rates will be, so we're going to, or hold that till next Tuesday for discussion on those three big pieces. But we've also got it up digitally, our budget book, which Nate will be taking us through, so I'll start off by just taking you through kind of the, the budget sections, so we've now got the table contents and page numbers, the, but we also have a process in the digital version where this is all pulling directly from Excel, and I think as we mentioned last time around, how council changes, we can, you know, we can literally go through them in real time and make changes. And, you know, over the next few days, if you have changes or things you want, you know, please let me know, this is a moving process, you know, random emails, just send them to me, and I'm, and you know, these are, we'll keep changing around. I've, so if we head to section one, or section one, the budget overview, I'm sorry, maybe my memo, I'll start with that, because it kind of helps me sort of orient, I think, you know, really happy to be presenting tonight, I think with the city manager and the finance director turnover, it was during mid-budget, it was, you know, a challenging process, but the team here really stepped up to the plate, and it was truly a team effort. I think a lot of ways, I don't consider this a manager's budget, but, you know, the team, the Ellsworth City Hall team budget, you know, it was, they've been here for every step of the process upstairs, especially Deb and Ashley, our assistant deputy treasurers, you know, in addition to keeping the checks running and accounts payable, accounts receivable, all of our processes, they have really helped out a lot on the actual budgeting and strategies and policy in ways I don't think that are nearly in their job descriptions, they've made nearly enough for, Nate, obviously our interim finance director, who's been on the budget, but is also in the background on reconciliation every day, he's the guy who found this. So this is, you know, and, you know, he's been an enormous help here, and just moved from, from Florida, so. Mike, our wastewater superintendent, who presented, I think, out of the, all the department, the best-looking budget book for his department I'd ever seen, and really stepped up to kind of put all the departments and kind of start getting this organization. Carrie, who's, oh, she's here, and we're going to, our HR director, really kind of given that top-level analysis, broad view of the payroll, and, which is our biggest expenses. And Nate, gosh, the amount of math and Excel formulas, and like, this isn't just going to pay attention to what you're seeing now, but, you know, next year's budget, this, this stuff is plug and play, and it's going to enable us, I think, to get a lot deeper in our analysis in kind of new and cool ways, so, and then of course, Matt, sort of a second city manager brain here on this budget process, and, you know, knows every little piece of this, so really happy. It's also been helpful for me, I think, it's kind of an opportunity to really dig into the details. Yesterday, I met with just about every single department head on my manager's recommendation, and, you know, and to kind of be at this, at this level of focus has been helpful. Some of the highlights, I think, is, you know, the fire department, we, the last one on the ARPA spending on the, the new garage air system for air quality, but not just for the, you know, the health and safety of the firefighters, but also invested in the upgraded emergency equipment, the jaws of life safety, which are in here, which is potentially taggable for ARPA. Our finance department, I've got recommendations really for an increased pay scale for the finance director, we've got 24 applicants now, maybe even more, 25, including some really excellent ones, we're starting the interview process soon, and really, really excited for that. I've also put in, there's a staff increase for additional, an assistant deputy treasurer, I think when we get to that section of the budget, this is in some ways budget neutral, even both these pieces, because of the reduction in professional services, they're budgeting 120,000 for, so I want to really bring that in-house and build institutional capacity of this team to reconcile, and then a lot of things that I think could make money, grants analysis, you know, grant consolidation, right now, every department kind of does it as their third or fourth job, and procurement policies, you know, in addition to additional backup in the department, so that we can really leave this piece as one of the most high-functioning categories in state government, so.
Charlie, can I encourage you to slow down?
Sure.
Something about 120,000, and it's like, I, I don't understand what you said.
You're right.
I think you should like embrace the moment and slow down, and walk us through something about, I missed the 120,000, I think I got everything else.
Yeah, and we'll get to the finance budget, so maybe I'll hold off on the details, and I'm just going to...
But was that like outsourced and bringing that in?
Yeah, 120,000 was budgeted for accounting, external, outsourced, previously budget was about 120,000, and we've talked about that before, about a quarter million over the last two or three years in audit accounting, and, so in some ways, I believe the finance additional staffing request, we can institutionalize, and in some ways be budget neutral.
I wanted to make sure I understood what you said, really, really fast.
So I kind of agree, I'm, I love the overview, I think it's, it's, it's great to know where you're headed with this, but if we could kind of, like, do re mi, start at the very beginning, and let's see where we are, and then it would be nice to be able to go department by department, I mean, we've got a few weeks, right? We could go department by department and have an understanding, really good understanding of what's been requested and what your suggestion, suggesting in each department, so we can get a good overview of what we're doing, because I'm, I feel like I'm flying blind, honestly.
But if we can just finish the, because you, you did the budget highlights, I still want to hear the budget challenges, I think this is good stage setting.
No, no, absolutely, the review, and then just kind of...
Absolutely, well then we'll start with the general overview of where we're at with the current tax rate based on current assumptions, could change, could change a lot, and then we'll go section by section, like, this is my manager's recommendation. To your point on the budget challenges, you know, a few of them is, you know, one, there's a lot of increased costs in here due to past budgeting practices, not accounting for actual benefits, so a lot of nondiscretionary pieces. Overtime was not put in for FICA or, and Carrie, I think we'll probably do benefits first, because she is next Tuesday, when I'm going to bring all the managers in for next Tuesday's meeting, so that once you've had some time to sit with this, you see my manager's recommendation, next Tuesday, you know, if you want to bring something back, if you want to bring something down more, you can, but we'll do Carrie's part first tonight, after I do the overview. But that was a big piece, like hundreds of thousands of dollars in previous years that wasn't being accounted for, for overtime tax, and it's not something new, it's just basically undesigned spending was covering that cost in previous years, but now we're going to account for it. If we spend money, we need to account for it. So a lot of the collective bargaining agreements, again, nondiscretionary, I don't, like, I can't, that's a huge piece of it. I have made a 15% to 20% reduction in nondiscretionary pieces, training, office supplies, professional school services for non-school departments. In some ways, I put this in a challenge, because this one's difficult for me, because it doesn't get us the huge, you know, reduction in somebody's tax rate. I do feel like for, you know, you know, for the, the high tax rate we already have, that it's incumbent upon us to really kind of keep it as low as possible, and I also, because of some other things, I think that I've talked to each department, and I think we can handle that on some of our discretionary side, but we, because we don't have the school department, that's already blinded or shielded from any kind of cut exercise, that once you get, I know, Michelle, you've mentioned this a few times, once you get, because this is where you'd like to be when you can say, okay, now we will share it between, but they're more than 50% of the government, so we're sort of, got a lot of nondiscretionary, we have a lot of not previously accounted for, the not, the discretionary spending isn't, is only 45% of the budget that I, you know, way less than that. Then general assistance, as I mentioned before, that goes up, that's mandated by state law, and it's a moral thing to do for the people that are in this area. And then there's high debt service, where these next two to three years are going to be our highest areas of debt service, you know, a little over a million dollars, so, you know, that's a consideration for driving increases here. And a big one is, you know, the, the lack of the reconciliation and no actuals from previous years, especially in the way they do budgeting, kind of traditional prior-year budgeting, when you don't, when you have a technology transfer that didn't, for budgeting software that didn't quite meet, you don't have a reconciliation, and you do traditional prior budgeting, it creates challenges, and I think in future, in addition to doing the reconciliation and kind of getting our house in order, the, you know, public value accounting, which I have a bit of experience in, state government, zero, zero budget, budgeting, which sort of takes, like, I want to see like a lot less whole numbers and a lot less, what are you actually to the dollar from square one? Like, you know, you, you think you have a staff increase, like, you know, expend it all out, you think you're going to have gasoline increases, like, what, what math did you use to project gasoline costs over the next year? Big cultural change, takes a lot more of a finance department that can kind of handle that sort of zero-based budgeting, public value accounting, but, you know, it might be something we want to, for future recommendations, move towards. So, and I guess in general, though, I'm so pumped about the future of the city, I think these are growing pains, a lot of municipalities have these exact same problems and worse. I've talked to other city managers, town managers, finance directors, people in the state government, you know, these are, there's been some growing page in finance, we're going to get there, but we also have so much growth here that, you know, a lot of kind of future growth can fund, I think, a lot of the needed investments in this city, and really excited about it, so. I'll pause there, and then we'll go to the city budget overview, if you want to bring that up on a big board for folks at home who want to follow along.
You're going to have to zoom that, because she's not going to be able to...
This is just awesome. This is like no other.
So, you know, we, sort of following the manager's recommendation, again, this is actually missing the roads, it has some big pieces, these roads, there's, depending on how much we want to fund roads for the year, that could, that's one of your big items, but, you know, we're at a 17.4% increase, we're, I think, at 22% when we started this. Again, depending on reserves, TIF, ARPA, that's not all accounted for in here, so if we want to, if council does want me to go in that direction of tagging some of these things with ARPA, you know, we, that's an area to lower some of these pieces.
Nate?
The tax impact kind of area, we broke it down to the, you know, Larry's done the estimation, he actually has a, to your point, Nancy has a memo here on how the mill estimations are created, with a YouTube link, also again, for those, we've also tried to really make this budget accessible, so if you're not an expert in any of these things, you can kind of read what's, what's in here.
Clarifying question.
Yes.
You said, what I heard... You said, what I heard you say was roads aren't in here.
Roads are in here, but this is the full departmental request without a manager's recommendation.
Okay.
So, that'll be, so that's another big, you know, multimillion piece that, you know, depending on council's, will, or, um, you know, that could drive down mill rate, that's one of the bigger pieces, if you. And as we said before, you know, last year, I think there was 1.9 million allocated to roads, and one point, or, and only about four or 500,000 got spent, so that we're in a, you know, we're in a backlog of road repairs that didn't get done previous years, so. It's a big line item for roads this year, in some ways because of last year and the lack of reconciliation and inability to encumber. But a big piece, I think, we'll get more into next Tuesday, is another lever you could, if you're trying to get that 18.2 back closer to the 17.3, which is really my goal, lower even, a one-mill rate would be great. But, uh, also, it's broken down by, you know, as you can see, the municipal side's holding about 17, um, 7.96 of the mill. The school is 9.78, and the county mill rate is about 0.46, so again, that gets back to my, as we're trying to drive the mill rate down, you know, we, we have, you know, less than 50% of the budget to sort of do it from now.
Well aware, yeah.
Also, the new addition is, you know, what the median resident tax bill, based on a $210,000 assessed value in FY '25, would be, you know, so we don't just have, hey, your mill rate would be this number, like, you know, it's a dollar change of 370 as currently outlined, prior to final budgeting. And then, a business tax example, just so you can see, you know, what a, you know, more higher value property might be expecting an increase in their contribution.
Just, maybe you've said this and I've missed it, but the overall valuation, how much did that jump per household or per?
I think it was 5%.
5%.
5%.
5%.
That's estimated.
Estimated.
Across the board. Now.
To the total value of the town.
Okay, so that would include, to, to clarify that, maybe I didn't need to ask questions out of turn here. But if it's 5%, is that 5% over existing buildings' valuation last year? Or does that 5% include new buildings that are being built?
It includes both.
And Larry, you want to come to the mic just a little, maybe give a little.
There, there is no, there, there is no figure that we have yet for new construction, new buildings, uh, new splits, or any, any of that, that's, that's part of the process with me going out and inspecting permits and, and, and pricing land splits, so the only way, we, we, we don't know what a final figure is for anybody. But the estimate that, that I have, that I've made, is that the increase in the total valuation will be 5% over last year's total value.
That's what I was looking for, and that is inclusive of new builds and existing from last year?
Yes.
Yeah, 5%, yeah.
Adjustments to existing values from last year.
And in the assessment sec, segment, which is just after ARPA, it's alphabetical and general government, they have a little breakdown of kind of how this goes.
Where are you?
Where are you?
Assessing 36.
Section.
Uh, general government.
Just like you said.
Yeah, and I did, I haven't included Larry's full memo, I'm sorry, Larry, we'll get it in there. He actually put together a one-pager with links to the YouTube video that he found from a Canadian place that is great. I know, I'm sorry, Larry, I, I have your first memo, but not the second one.
Well, if I may, um, the, on the city website, each department has a page. And if you go to the assessing page, that, there is this video, I don't know if you've ever seen it or not, but it, it explains, I don't know if you can get into, it, it's about a three and a half minute video, but for the general public especially, but anybody, you know, it, it explains very well how assessment and taxation work, and, and it, and it's super easy to understand. And, uh, and it's only three and a half minutes, and it's sort of like a cartoonish type video.
That one?
Yeah. Do you want to watch it?
Well, we do, I think we have a, we got a lot tonight, so, next time, next time.
Now, we know where you're finding it.
Now, we know, it's right on the city's website, I think, the.
Yeah, the assessing page.
And I'm gonna get Larry's memo in there for the final product here, so that folks reading the budget will have the link in the, um, and his, because he has a great one pager that, what is that, ad valorem, that was a new term for me.
Oh, ad, adorem, yeah.
So, get it back just to this, oh, go on. So, that's kind of where we're at in the general overview, and kind of what, you know, what our, our benchmarks are, we can, you know, I can show you what, as we discussed before on, you know, maybe we'll do this at the end of kind of, Nate can bring up the actual Excel seed sheets on how much you'd need to find if you want to bring it down to 7, 17.3, and, and that's all built into the Excel, our documents, so if you need kind of those numbers, we can go that. And if you were to use the ARPA spending and not put it into tax rates for the things we bet, we think it should go towards.
Do we have data, um, this is awesome. The question I have is, do we have data on the mill rates prior to 2022?
Yes.
We do, yeah, we can, we can get you, um.
I'd just be interested in seeing, because, you know, just in the last three years, we've kind of swung up and down a bunch. And, um, it's, I would be interested in knowing what the historical mill rates have been, because again, from a.
Hey, asking you, shout us.
What's it worth to you?
Maybe a mill rate or two.
I can say I've got the next one.
I knew I should have copied 10 or 12 or 50.
So, we can do it.
We can make copies.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you, Ashley.
Maybe we'll also.
Thank you. Yeah, with the whole punch, please.
Maybe I'll, I'll get the comparative mill rate, I know, yeah, it's not the whole story.
Well, yeah, kind of get the assessment too.
And to that point, too, I recall seeing somewhere in the last couple of years, a comparison of mill rates, I think it was in the Ellsworth American, of, of similarly sized communities in Maine, and also like service centers, um, and, or, you know, county seats.
That was in the last presentation.
Last week's, last week's meeting, we did that.
I wasn't at that meeting.
Oh, you weren't here, right?
I recall seeing that, surely you all saw it.
We had that.
You did have that, is that in here?
No, no, but we'll, we'll, I'll bring that back in, yeah.
You can borrow this, but I want it back.
What's interesting there, and I think Michelle kind of pointed this out, you can see, even though our mill rate might seem kind of low, the amount we pull in at 24, because of the large land mass in our valuations, you know, there's a little more than just the mill rate to the story. I actually found an article from 2022 mentioning Ellsworth as one of the lower. Hancock County is one of the lowest tax rates in Maine, and Ellsworth specifically is a great place for housing investments. But it's a more complicated story than just look.
It's because of the val, not the valuation of the entire city, but the valuation of individual homes, like my home, the value of my home, because it's sitting in Ellsworth, is higher than it would be if it was sitting in LeMoyne. Even though LeMoyne has a higher mill rate, I would still pay less taxes in LeMoyne on my house. And that's, that's kind of the story that you, that you, you need to see, and I think, Steve, last year, didn't you get like 10 years of, of tax bills?
Last year, I brought in for everybody, 10 years from my house, which is an average run of the mill house. It was evaluated at 256 or something like that. And, and what I saw, or what we saw, was it had gone up $500 in 10 years.
Thank you.
Okay, so $50 a year, and I remember saying at the time, maybe that was the wrong amount, maybe it should have been 75 a year or 100 a year, but it went from $500 increase in 10 years to $600 in one year with that tax increase that we had last year. So, it was just food for thought, and, and again, maybe the $50 a year was the wrong number, maybe it should have been 100. But in 10 years, it went up 500 bucks, and in one year, it went up 600 bucks. And I, I just thought that was a good analysis to talk about, it made some sense.
Interesting.
And the other side of that, too, is, you know, that our valuations are higher because of where we are and the services that the city provides, and the, those services cost money. So, that's the other piece of it, when we're looking at the mill rate and the valuations and things, our school system, you know, library, the parks, the, you know, we're right in the middle of, uh, we're a service center, so everything is right here, and we pay for that in our valuations. So, it's great when you sell your house, in the meantime, you know, but it really is, there is a reason that, that we have that valuation, so. Which is a good thing.
I think to, to just speak a little bit more about that, I, I think one of the things that I just wanted to drive home last year was that I don't care what the mill rate is, I don't care what the valuation is, but it was $500 over 10 years, and it was $600 in one year, that's, that's the moving piece.
My tax is one of $1,000 last year.
Yeah, and that's the, um.
One hit.
That's the piece here, why we tried to add this median tax example, and maybe we could even do a 500,000, or 210,000 was the median price, but we could maybe add another example, just so. You know, in between the two and 800, just, and, and having the prior year, you know, just so you can see, hey, your increase last year was X, and your increase this year might be Y.
I like what you've got here with the median, with the two.
Larry, what is that percentage of valuation to what the state, where do we set with the state's valuation?
Well, we're, uh, our ratio is, is just a little below 90%. Around 87. And that, and that's with the adjustments that have been made, um, the, the past three years.
Could you tell me what that means?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Larry, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I just, I don't know what that meant. Thank you.
The state reviews all sales, and so do I. And, um, I go through the sales, and I determine which are good sales, which are bad sales. You know, if it's a, if it's a million dollar property and sells for 100,000, it's probably not a good sale. And, and, you know, for closers or not, unless we're in a deep recession, usually not market value. But, so I go through all the sales and determine, I, I compare the assessed value to the actual sale price and do a sales ratio analysis, and the state will take that information and let, 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 they'll actually divide to get to the full value at 100%. They'll just take the difference and raise it up, like, we're, we're around 87% right now. And that's, uh, so they'll be, the, the, the state valuation, they'll raise that to 100%. And that's what they use for revenue sharing, is 100% valuation.
Revenue sharing and school, the school values for just.
I might also say, to back up a little bit, when David Cole was the city manager, I remember we, we did service center analysis, and it was incredible, and, and that's what we have to look at, I think, when we compare Ellsworth's tax rate and valuations, is of service centers. And during that time, there were, there were, uh, on, on the analysis, we were at the very bottom of the list with the tax rate. I think the only town that was below us was Wells, were service centers. And all the others, there was like 30 service centers, and we were at the bottom when we, we looked at our tax rate. So, that, that, that's another hit on us, because we are a service center, it means we also have a lot of exempt values. Not only do we get the commercial property valuations, but we get a lot of exempt values too, zero tax.
And one question about that, oh, I'm sorry.
With, with these, the various tax exempt, do we have any payment in lieu of taxes?
We don't.
Arrangements with any?
No, there's, there's never been.
We do the Jax line.
Jax, okay, that's good too.
It's a contribution, they call it a pilot, so.
Yeah, but, uh, there's, there's never been a, a direct request, uh, for that type of.
No judgment, just a question, so Jax does, but the others, whether it's the hospital or conserve land, they don't, okay?
We did it one year, we asked for, we, we asked for a pilot from, from nonprofits, and we didn't get anything.
Cost us more to mail everything than the money we got back, so we never did it again.
Do you have a pilot in here for 30,000 other revenue?
And that's sort of like some, some of the smaller, we do get some, I think Maine Community Foundation might pay like 10,000, and there's some other ones, there is a list of.
But there's a lot, there's a lot of, between, not just state and, and county government.
There's such a variety of taxes out here.
All of their buildings, it's every nonprofit in the city, and the, the hospital and everything, it's, you, one time you put that together, the percentage of value that was actually not taxable, you, you put that together one time, it was an unbelievable amount.
We would have increased another 25% if we were taxing nonprofit exempt.
Or the land, too.
And just to round out the conversation, they're nonprofits, because they offer value and provide services, so.
They do.
They, there is a reason that they're nonprofits, but it's also, given that, it's worth exploring at some point.
And the service center aspect of the town, yeah.
And if I may add, that the nonprofits ask for contributions from the city in some cases.
There you go.
So, not only are they non-tax, but they're asking for taxpayer donations through the city. I'm not poking at anybody, I just think it's a great time to throw that out, that they don't have a tax bill, and they come before the city looking for more money, that's something to be said for that. If I may ask a question, um, you mentioned a service center.
Yes.
Okay, um, and of those service centers, I realize Ellsworth is a service center, and they're also the county seat. So, throughout the state, I would assume service centers aren't necessarily the county seat.
I think you're correct.
Correct? And so, the county seat is probably an elevated service center in, in the counties and state, is that fair to think?
I've never studied it, but I would agree, yeah.
I've checked out, Ellsworth is, you know, it's hard to do the comp for the city of Ellsworth because of this, like Hancock and Washington, this massive land mass, this huge, and, you know, their service centers, like Brewer and Bangor, but they, you know, they both service a kind of lot of area, and it's, it's really unique on kind of how Ellsworth is positioned. Now, we do get revenue sharing too, which I, and there, there is like state funding to account for that, so there's revenue sharing one, that the state gives back in kind of their, you know, sales tax revenue sharing. But then, because we're a service center, we also get revenue sharing two, which I think is a million something, it's in the revenues here. If we have it, yeah, we, 1.8 million, that's just in general revenue sharing, I think. You know, I could get you the breakdowns, but we do get a substantial portion because of our service center aspect. Now, if you lower the tax rate too much, or you, let's say, valuations grow, and you start lowering your tax rate, you could lose that revenue sharing too, there's like a threshold cutoff. Bitdefard, actually, I was, it was recently, this example, they started, valuations started increasing, and they started lowering their tax rate to account for their valuation increases, but they lowered it below the revenue sharing two, so they lost like a million bucks from revenue sharing two that they had to account for in their, that's kind of one of the challenges they face. So, there is this interesting financial balance to that.
Or create more TIFs.
Yeah, which is also why the TIF is important to maximize, because that doesn't hurt your revenue sharing.
The, the main thing I just want to emphasize is that we are a service center, and, and that's how we should compare our tax rate, our taxes, with other service centers, not surround. with other service centers, not surrounding small towns that have tax rates that are half as ours. I, 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 I once looked at buying, um, a property in a, a neighboring town and, and for, for living residents and, um, and the, the tax rate was half. But I did a, um, a car gasoline analysis. Both my wife and I work, we'd, we'd be driving back to Ellsworth and it was almost the savings we had in tax, property tax, we ate up with extra gasoline. So, uh, we didn't do it. We didn't buy that house.
Great. Well, if we, if you're amenable, I'd love to switch to sort of the initial managers' recommendations by departments and we'll start with HR, with Carrie Yanning over there.
Can I just ask one quick question? Council approved, manager adjusts department requests.
Yep.
Can you just quickly explain?
Sure, so, um-
What it sounds like?
Yep, so the department requests, and they were all kind of the same last time we, we spoke. Um, the department requests were, you know, what was presented by departments and what we validated, um, over the last few weeks to make sure that, um, so you all can see this as council. Now I've, you know, knowing, once I see the top line numbers, trying to push us back as close to the previous year's mill rate, I made it, I've made some increases and some decreases. Um, mostly decreases, but, um, the, um, and I've made sort of a manager recommendation and I'll take you through that tonight, um, where it's at. And then, you know, as we move forward, you, you might say, you know, go pound sand, Charlie, that's a ridiculous decision. And I'll hear that unanimously tonight and I'll say, okay, so this one I'm gonna change. Um, and next Tuesday, we'll have a council recommendation that you see.
So for right now, council approved and manager adjust is the same, but that will potentially change as we go through this.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, that's helpful.
And that, and then that, um, once we get to finals, we'll, um, we'll be able to set that right. Just for a timeline, next Tuesday is our next piece, as I said, we'll bring in all of the managers. We're gonna do Carrie tonight, cause she's, um, gosh, she's got something with her kid, I can't believe it, next Tuesday, you didn't tell.
(laughing).
But we're gonna let it go, um.
It's another one, choosing their kid over a budget meeting.
Yeah.
Doing something like that.
That'll be meeting this week too.
So, I think that, you know, as you take time to hear my recommendation tonight, but also look through the book and say, you know what? Like, I don't, I don't agree with that, maybe you should cut more, or maybe like try, we need to bring that back, but, you know, Mike, like, tell us more examples on why you wanna have this. Um, and, and I'll be honest with you, I've had some back, I think yesterday was all that. And I'm not sure. Um, so it's, you know, it's up to the council to decide and please be, be critical, so.
Okay.
Um, so with that, we'll go to page nine.
I'd love to.
Steve looked at me, I'm like, really?
Sorry, Steve.
Uh, we'll go to, we'll start at page ninety-nine, um, and Carrie, with human resources budget. We're also gonna do employee benefits, which are kind of Carrie's two sections.
Amazing.
Carrie.
And maybe I'll, um, I know you've already presented the council, Carrie, but maybe I'll do my, um, my adjustment summary and kind of some of the thinking here, um, and then the council has questions for you or I, but, um. So right now, we have one person in human resources, um, you know, there's originally a request, uh, as you see in the new request summary. So that new request summary is gonna be what the department, if they had any new requests, um, what they requested there. Um, there's actually all, their memo is also in here, so if you wanna hear kind of why they originally requested it or what they were thinking, um, it's there. Um, you know, and, uh, as mentioned a few times, my manager adjustment summary really here is, um, is that this, this should be a dedicated human resources specialist, um, to assist Carrie, not a, not a share, um, with somebody else. As I mentioned before, like, there's a lot of organizational design things I'm still struggling with and thinking through. This is the one piece of the organization that's a single point of failure. Um, when Carrie's been out, I've already had issues that I'd have to step in, um, for human resources related that had, um, put an enormous strain on me and the organization and, like, the backlog I have, we both have, I should say, um, for things, you know, employee performance reviews, you know, hiring and, um, posting of jobs, the interview processes. Um, we're, we're a big organization with a lot of churn, um, you know. Steve, you mentioned on the, the healthcare analysis on, there's so much to be done in this piece and to me, people are policy. This is one of the biggest pieces. Um, if we're getting a great, better culture here, um, you know, better retention policies, better planning the churn, um, you know, really kind of, you know, things that I, I think in some ways have fallen by the wayside that we can really, we're gonna get an enormous value at, um, from, uh, a resource specialist with Carrie. Um, and, and, you know, knowing the organization for about eight weeks now, like, you know, I can, this is, this is the piece that I feel like can really expand some capacity in addition to finance. Um, so I accounted for that, uh, a full-time position, not exceeding fifty thousand dollars. Um, uh, and increased the professional development line to twelve thousand five hundred, I think from seven thousand five hundred. Most of the budgets have been kind of cut in that training category across departments, office supplies and others. Um, this one I increased because I feel like a citywide and even council included, sort of, culture, leadership training. You know, right now, it's kind of scattershot, each department kind of decides what they're gonna do and they have a bucket of money to spend it from. I feel like there's a larger strategic training, um, you know, organized through Carrie. And that's one of the things with the HR specialist, I think, needs to be kind of brought back in, um, is a strategic or, like, overview of all of the training that we're spending on. And also, we have pretty generous PTO policies here and when, we even have a lot of overtime based on training. So when we send people out for trainings, we have to pay overtime on those things, plus the, so are we getting our bang for our buck across the organization? Yeah, we, we, I think that's another thing Carrie can really start to dig into, um, for the organization, so. I'll stop there. Uh, I guess I should explain, sorry, it's not, it's, so then your next page is you're gonna have the details of the budget. Again, this is a new budget, so that's why I know prior years, um, it used to be in the city manager's office.
I was wondering why you had a thousand percent increase.
Yeah.
Where was the budget for last year? Okay, thank you.
Uh, and then you'll have in the next pages, um, some of the explanations of what the lines are for and why they may have gone up or down, um, as well as her narrative. Um, and this was the piece where I said I was gonna create a totally separate little mini-book, um, and was proven wrong, wasn't we? (laughing) What to it? Does fit in here, increase it from three hundred and twenty-five pages to five hundred, but I think we're still.
Mm-hmm.
We're printing on both sides, so, keeping it there. Any questions for Carrie or?
How do you feel about it, Carrie?
Good, optimistic.
So Carrie, will this person be doing like clerical work or like, or be really your deputy? Or what are your plans for this person at fifty thousand dollars?
Sure. Uh, so definitely, I guess, a mixture of all things. So currently, as it stands right now, I'm the only person that processes payroll for the city. So that would be one of the major, um, pieces, is that we would have backup. Um, some of the other things would be mostly clerical in terms of like, doing the retirement filing that has to be done monthly and weekly, um, being able to assist employees with address changes, that type of stuff. Um, some of the things, I guess, it's, it's tough to answer right now because it would, I guess, be dependent upon, um, the person. A bit, you know, kind of reflective upon their, whoever we end up hiring, what their skills are, what the current skill set is when they come in. Um, so I think it's, it's tough to answer because it's so new. They don't have a job description put together yet. Um, I think ideally, the person would be doing a lot of clerical work, but be capable of doing higher level things. Uh, but the, right now, I think it would probably be a clerical piece. And the fifty thousand dollars is just a maximum. Um, it certainly could be less, a, a, a lower salary if, if that's all, you know. If it's just clerical and we find that that's sort of the route we're gonna take, we could certainly bring them at a, in at a lower salary. I'm losing.
You know, I'm happy to get you, I'd love to, you know, in some ways this is not on Carrie cause she was budgeting a half kind of clerical and I'm seeing the pressure here. Um, and, you know, happy to bring more information on that to you. I mean, I think my, my checklist has about twenty-five things that would fall under this category, whether it's the leadership training, the performance reviews, um, which happened, happened in about three years. That's a big piece, um, of new performance review policies citywide, um, and implementing that. Um, and, you know, and there's a ton of work to be done there. The, the healthcare and benefits analysis, the personnel ordinance, which is under, you know, consideration for some changes there. Um, you know, we have, we get to that in the benefits piece, I guess, next, on the paid family medical leave. Um, and, uh, and honestly, it kind of frees up Carrie to be in a more high level with me and the organization.
Someone doing your clerical work. You're so skilled to have you being doing clerical work that even the payroll, I, I understand, but.
So back to the phrase we heard earlier, she can get beyond fixing it when it breaks.
Mm-hmm.
And do some preemptive work.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I've got a question and I guess it's for this, but moving forward. If it's a fifty thousand dollar annual salary, but when do you expect hiring? Because you're not gonna be hiring by July one. So just wondering about what we, do you budget for July one, but knowing you're not actually gonna spend it? Or do you budget for September first?
You know, I actually think we could probably, this one, budget to forty thousand and that'll be more reflective if we got to the, the full fifty. Uh, so I wouldn't mind it as a council adjust here, um, you know.
That's twenty, less than twenty dollars an hour, right?
Yeah.
No, but it's not, I'm not saying lower the salary. What I'm saying is you're not gonna, they're not gonna be on board July first.
It's gonna take us two months.
No, no, I was just trying to think in my head how much, like, how much that, that would be, um, an hour. Cause fifty thousand is, is twenty-four dollars an hour for a year. So if they work forty hours a week.
Hmm. So this number's not reflective of any, um, benefits or anything like that?
And we're gonna go to benefits in a second.
That's right, benefits is a separate section.
And this is kind of something I'm thinking for next year, is like, you know, I would love to see all of that, like, and fringe. Like, included in the departmental requests and their budgets and the positions, um, cause we, we were actually, we've been talking about that loss today. The requests were kind of made as part of the original process. Now, benefits are included, so we actually, we'll get there in a second, there's a three percent, um, in the benefits built in and for all new positions, actually, the benefits are already built, we just kind of had to keep it there as, as a case. So we don't approve some of these things, that could go down a bit. Um, but, uh, you know, that, the, the other thing is just technology too. So I think in a future budget cycle, we might wanna bring those into our departmental budgets so you can see.
Right.
Hey, I'm requesting a forty, you know, a fifty thousand dollar person, but that's really eighty-five over the year when you include fringe, technology, office supplies, wear and tear in the building, um, insurance.
It shows what it really costs to have that person. And again, I'm not talking, I don't wanna minimize what the proposal is, just the reality that it won't be twelve months of that salary, so.
No, I, and, and there's other areas of the budget where I'm actually, but we'll get to, uh, where I actually have accounted for that. So this one I didn't, um, and I think I should, I think I should, you know, if, if we were to move forward with this piece, I'd probably go to forty as a true, and then next year would be fifty. It, or we, somebody gets hired for forty-two, um, and that's the level of, of, you know, of their previous experience and we feel like they'd be a good fit and they're in at forty-two and, um, they're budgeting. And that's the great thing about this system too, we'll be able to track that in real time. It's, all this stuff is built into the software, so no more sharing Excel sheets and having to update things. Just, they get hired, Carrie puts it into Casell, it's there, the benefits are going, and we're like, oh, next year, this budget season, we're like, oh, maybe we'll have this conversation, how, how much did that HR specialist really cost us? (laughing).
One question I would just ask, and I'm not, uh, I'm, I'm asking about the position, not you, the person. But with this extra person, are there efficiencies that you can bring to the table that we're not getting today?
I think so. Um, currently, right now, I'm working on digitizing all of the employee records and this is something, it's a very slow process, of course. So any new hire that comes in, um, I have digital files that are created for them. It's, it is much more efficient. Like, for example, I had a phone call from Main Purse today, which is the Maine State Retirement Program. Um, they had questions about a retiree. I have to go dig through the storage system, through paper files to try to find the information. The goal to have this new person here is to work on some of those projects because if I can just a few clicks, pull up that employee's, um, all previous employees and current employees, uh, personnel files, we can have those answers for, for Main Purse or whomever may. Sometimes you have the employee themselves call, you know, for things. Um, so that's one piece of it. A big piece of it is just having everything digitized. Would be a huge, um, efficiency for the city, for myself now and for the next HR manager. Um, and so, yeah, absolutely. I think there's other things like, back to what Charlie was talking about, um, employee, um, performance reviews, that's huge. Um, I really wanna work with the department heads to get, um, like, a uniform system put together. We are working on it and kind of have something but trainings and, and being a lot more, um, on top of those things. Right now, it's a bit difficult to kind of, uh, there are a lot of departments and I'm one person that serves the entire city. So it's difficult to stay on top of those things. Does that answer your question?
It does, and, and I'm, I'm viewing that you've got a bunch of balls in the air and you could have somebody, uh, to help with that load. And I'm also hearing, I hear about the fifty thousand, but I'm, I'm also wondering how much that buys, uh, value from you. Uh, and where I'm going with that is just what you said. Um, what can you bring to the whole organization that we are not bringing today if we are spending fifty grand? And I, I think there's a lot of vision there that, um, needs to be considered instead of just the fifty grand.
Sure. It's a good question. I think, um, something that I could, you know, be happy to put together some information to, you know. I don't, I'm not prepared for that question tonight, but it is a good question.
Right, but I think, I think more, if that happened, maybe next year, we could hear how it evolved.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Something like that.
And, you know, I think, not to put Carrie too much in the spotlight, but she's got a great story of her, you know, working her way up in this organization and continues to show an enormous amount of leadership potential in ways that I think that, you're right, Steve, there's gonna be new things. Um, I've been extremely impressed. And I think now that we're all up in the war room and kind of, we're kind of office mates with Carrie now and she's on, and she's on the crash finance team that is doing these, these things. Um, like, we see the people, you know, she's HR. I don't know exactly what they're talking about in there, there's a white noise machine that goes on and people talk to HR. Um, you know, like any organization, but that's also, I think, the single point of failure piece too, which, I know, when she was out for a week and I think, you know, I think we all talked like, oh, gosh, Carrie's not, shouldn't be allowed to take vacation. But when you start hearing that in an organization, you realize, we've got a little bit of issue. Um, and she's insanely valuable and I think we'll get even more value out of this.
Well, this plan gives success a chance.
Uh, on to employee benefits, uh, which is eighty-three.
I think it's-
It is.
I think it's seventy-five.
Seventy-five? Sorry. You're right. These page numbers are helpful. I almost had Nate cancel the page numbers.
Oh.
Just, just because we had the tabs.
I think that was pretty close to a boom.
Yeah.
Forget every nice thing we said tonight. Someone find employee benefits.
And thank you, Devon Ashley, thank you.
Okay. Thank you for the books.
So I'll just, um, I'll give kind of my general take on this piece. You'll see, this is a big increase, um, a twenty-nine point five percent increase over previous years. Um, there's a lot of collective bargaining agreements that are driving this, but I think, as we talked about earlier, the, um, this police had a new, um, retirement package that went forward, that, that the fire, um, ended up mirroring that substantial increase. Um, you know, collective bargaining agreements with wage increases.
Three this year.
Three this year, the police, I think, last year, but that was stagger, a twenty-seven percent increase over three years, I think it was for police. So we're, every year, those get a bit bigger. This is also an area where we talked about the overtime that had not been budgeted, um, in previous years. Um, and it's a substantial, what is it, s- almost a million dollars in overtime?
Yep, as of right now, yep, or last week's payroll, it's nine hundred and thirty-two thousand.
That's crazy.
This is so crazy.
And that's year-to-date?
Oh, well, fiscal year, yep, from July one of twenty-three until last, until five twenty-one.
So, and I might throw out that, uh, the plow crew set at Home Law Order.
Yep. I mean, they, they-
And I, I don't mean that derogatory. What I'm saying is, is that their overtime must have been way less than normal.
It was, yep, it was pretty minimal because they had a mild winter, so, yep.
And we're still doing some analysis work here, there's, um, it, but it is substantial, I mean, either way, it's substantial. The majority of that is in police and fire, um, and when we go through this, but that, that was one of the other, I know, Tammy and I talked about this. I didn't quite, in previous budgets, there's, they categorized the overtime as like payroll, OT payroll. And then there'd be, you know, payroll, vacation, payroll, um, you know, uh, training, payroll. And I, I thought overtime payroll was all of the, and then they had a general payroll. I didn't realize that every single one of those was actually in overtime. So when somebody goes on vacation and somebody has to pick up that shift, that's overtime and they categorize that. So we've re-categorized it to be overtime, just so a layperson like me could under- So we've re-categorized it to be overtime, just so a layperson like me could understand the full impact. And I think in prior years, I don't know if that is why, previous finance budgets didn't include the sort of payments, because, you know, the feds take their piece, like, if you, regardless of you pay overtime or general wages, they're going to take their FICA, there's these other, but they hadn't been budgeted. So we have had multi-years of budgeting where it hasn't been included.
I really want to see that, because you had talked about that with me, but I, at least when I did it.
No, I'm sure.
It was included, so that concerns me, yeah, but.
Yeah, I'm sure.
And then have we had the, we've had the bridge done, right, between the payroll software into Casell, correct?
In progress, yeah.
So how do you determine that that is definitely 900 or a million dollars in overtime, if that bridge hasn't been done?
I'm pulling it, I'm not pulling it from Casell, I'm pulling it out of the payroll software.
Gotcha, okay. And are they on a calendar year, or are you doing it fiscal year?
Fiscal year, FY '24, as of last Friday's payroll.
Happy to take you through, like, and we actually, like, I had Carrie, like, spot check, like, pull a W-2, and then let's see what actually was in there.
So, so their vacation pay in the budget, when they're putting it in, is the coverage of someone's vacation? It's not the amount of money we paid for someone's vacation when they didn't work?
Correct.
I think so, yes.
But we've reclassified it as OT vacation, because they, they needed to categorize for police and fire, like, you know, if they're having training, if they're having this, to be able to understand how their overtime is being used. But from a layperson, when you see it, like, oh, this is 100,000 overtime, oh, actually, if you include all of these line items, it's.
And so, and what was budgeted, was it anywhere near the amount of money that they spent?
Does that include any, like, grants that cover some of the overtime or something like that? So that may be offset a little bit too.
That probably does, yep, because there are several that they, they do submit reimbursements for. But as of, like, and, and that's not the whole total together. I'm not, I don't know what they budgeted for FY '24, I'd have to look. But if we look at just what's, what's labeled as just overtime, it's definitely, you know, we would have to add up all of those, there's like several vacations, sick, training. You know, so they would all have to be added together. I, I do think that it is under-budgeted, but it's not, I mean, if you look at just the overtime, it's definitely significantly lower than what the actual overtime rates are. If you add all of those categories together.
Then it comes a little closer.
Oh, oh, yes, it comes much closer, absolutely, it's still, still.
I was worried that we had just overdrawn a million dollars worth of overtime when you say that, and I was like, holy cow.
And I should clarify on the benefits, this is, we were not, we were not doing federal taxation on, even though we, the feds take taxes out of overtime benefits, they weren't calculating that. So that, it's not that we weren't budgeting overtime, there is still somewhat of a discrepancy between, you know, budget, but it's that they had budgeted overtime previously, but they weren't budgeting the benefits on the overtime, the taxes you would pay to the feds.
So the Social Security and Medicare wasn't based off the full bud, payroll budget, it was?
Based off of base salaries.
Pay, payroll base.
Because I had to go through, we had to go through and, and add in, you know, pull the overtime rates or the overtime totals for FY '24 as of last Friday. And I had to manually enter those into our Social Security and Medicare, Maine-Purs, Mission Square Retirement spreadsheet, so that we could get a somewhat accurate number of what we're going to be looking at for FY '25. Because, I mean, we have, yeah, like Charlie just said, you have to pay the Social Security and Medicare and all of that on the.
Because it should be as simple as taking the payroll lines, because the, even if it's, you know, if you, of what was budgeted, even if it's overtime or if it's not, and multiplying it by .0765, and that's your Medicare, right?
Right.
Unless they overdraw, unless they overrun the budget, that should be covered.
Yeah, we took, we wanted exact numbers. So basically, that's why we did it that way, is taking people's base salaries and taking the actual overtime that was worked and, and going with actual numbers. I mean, because some of it you can't predict, because you could have resignations or retirements or, you know, emergencies where people are here for 24 hours fixing water main breaks, or, you know, those types of things, snowstorms, all of that, you really can't predict that stuff. So we wanted to go on as, as close to actual as we, as we could. Based on the base salaries, the July 1 union increases, contractual increases that we'll be hitting, and the overtime that was actually paid out to the departments in FY '24.
But, and that, but that also corresponds with what we're asking for to cover for payroll in the budget, correct?
I, I believe so, yeah. Because all of our unions, of course, they know what they're going to be, what they're contracted to pay July 1. So yes, they all, they all include that. And then we did a 3% COLA for non-union employees this year. So that's also in there, this is 3%.
A few other notes, would you mind, Steve?
I, I just had a question about group dynamics. That is the HRA that you're paying out, and that number is the budget number, or is that is, like, close to what? Last year was 258. Is that fair?
Yes, yep. And so that's a 50%, so we budget that number at 50%.
And so the 262 is 50%?
Correct.
Okay. And it's, it's about 40% used?
Correct.
Direct? Okay.
Typically, yep.
Which is industry average, is it not?
We'll take your word for it, Steve, but we're looking to.
Oh, yeah.
It's got to be, yeah, 40, yeah. So if you take group dynamics and the health insurance, that's 49.9% of this total benefits package, is that health?
Health insurance, please.
50%.
Yep. Yes, the health insurance is, yep, it's, it's a big cost. So that number too, just to keep in mind, it does include all of the proposed new positions. So that very well will come down. If those positions are not approved, then, you know, we'll just take those out. And so that's, that's that number, so.
And that's at the family care level, right?
It is, yep.
That's at family level.
So typically, you know, because you don't know, you can't predict, if you hire a new employee, will they need single coverage? Will they be enrolling in families, really, you don't know, so.
But history tells us a lot.
And there's one thing that, and this isn't my manager's adjustment summary, it's no changes technically, but I think Carrie has been conservative and cautious, and yeah, but this includes a 3% increase, you know, who's all the new positions, if we were to go to 3% COLA, which is a decision for council. The, but also, I, you know, I, I hesitated to pull it back, just because this is what we believe it would be. And the second, if there is savings, and we'll keep monitoring it, we do have, we have sort of unbudgeted PTO payouts that happen every year, and I, I might want to consider putting that into a reserve account. You know, I was mistaken in that this would be the employee liability reserve, I was excited to see that, I was like, oh, great, 79, but if that's unemployment insurance, that is what it is. We, I'm glad we know where it's at, and we'll have to analyze whether that's funded enough. But maybe it goes back to our reserve account strategic, like, alignment and making sure, and maybe if there's savings here, that next budget cycle, we encumber and move that forward into reserve accounts for PTO. We haven't budgeted PTO in here, but it is paid out pretty substantially every year.
That's, that's unused, they get it, if they don't use it, they get paid for it?
If they resign or retire.
Oh, okay.
And we're just trying to do some analysis, we're still, and this is where Carrie, right, she's HR, but she's doing a lot of financial analysis here, you know, what did we think, about 50 to 75,000 a year in PTO paid out? So what was the, did we even have initials on that?
I don't, I was actually working on that this afternoon to try to get an idea of where we're at with that. So hopefully by next week, we'll have some idea on that.
And what is our HSA city match?
Retirement, health savings, yep, the city match, yep.
And that's for police, fire, and highway, correct?
Correct, yep.
You also see paid family medical leave, again, this is a new one, sort of a nondiscretionary, this is a half and half, so we'll have to, you know, employees will be paying, correct, the other half of this piece?
And that, yep, and that's something that I figured we would, because as an employer with more than 15 employees, we have the option to split it with the employees, it seems fair, that we would, you know, do half and, half a percent, half a percent. We haven't really had the conversation yet. I do have some questions out to the city's attorney for clarification on things, but the state hasn't finalized all these regulations yet. So we're still kind of up in the air on how some of these things work. Starting January 1st, we're going to have to start paying in the 1%. Now, the state is fine with if we do half and half of the employees, or if we pay the whole 1%, but either way, we're going to have to start paying in. And I'm not quite sure what that looks like yet, if it will be like a monthly thing, or how will, we, I'm not sure how it will work. But it seems fair that we would, I've done some preliminary estimations on my own, like, how much is this going to cost the employee each week? It's, it's not too, too bad, I mean, it is, it's a large expense for the city overall, you know. This, this budget number is based on just July, excuse me, January 1st until July of next year, and at a half of a percent, assuming that the employee will cover the other half.
There was part about it, the, the benefit doesn't start until July of '26, right?
I think it's May of '26, about '26, yes. So it's an, it's an interesting concept.
Kind of like funding it.
Well, yeah, they pre-fund it, make sure they go.
Having helped build this for Massachusetts, yeah, you got to build a trust fund.
Yep.
And, yeah, you guess, you got to spend a year taxing people, you build a trust fund to a certain designated amount, and then you can start drawing and setting your raise on that. Or we could try to get our own plan?
But don't you still, aren't they saying right now that if you, even if you do it yourself, you still have to pay the tax to the state? Or there's something that you have to do?
I, I know that it is an option, you can do it yourself, but based on the, the stuff that I've read so far, it doesn't seem like it's really going to be worth it, because by the time you put something like that together, but it may be.
It has to be better, so.
Right.
Yeah, but I think that the state was penalizing, if you did it, or if you hired someone else to take care of it, instead of the state. I was reading, because we're going through the same thing, trying to figure out, and, and I was reading something about it, it was just like, the state was trying to make it so it wasn't valuable to you not to use their service in this, and.
Interesting.
Yeah. I'd have to, my HR manager, she's, 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 she's like you, she's really good, and she's always trying to teach me this stuff. And I'm like you, and I don't want to. Right, Tammy?
I just have to throw this out, not for this year, but, and I know it's a very unpopular subject, but it needs to be thrown out, that there are many, many places that only pay for single subscriber insurance. And at 50% of 3.3 million, and I know it's an unpopular topic, but, and I, I don't know that that is completely necessary, but there needs to be some consideration for that, as this thing continues to go out of control. And I, again, I know every employee is probably going to put a gun to my head, but at some point, not this year, but I really think the city needs to look at single subscriber and more participation from the employee for the family. And I know that's not popular, but we're talking about numbers.
Yep.
It's worth throwing out there.
Yep, absolutely, and.
We'll get Carrie that new assistant to have more time.
Exactly.
But I'm, I'm not being mean, I'm being honest.
No, it's. You know, I see these. Should be under consideration.
You know, maybe, maybe that's drastic, maybe there's a medium in between, but this is a big number here.
No, I think some of your points, I mean, it's good to get options, to see where they're at, we're considering them now, and there could be, you know, cost savings, and there could not, and then we say, we don't want to go there.
I'm sorry, you had said that there's, the COLAs are built into this, but I don't see it anywhere.
So it's built in as if the, where there's a 3% COLA, and this is a, a, the benefits would cover a, a 3% across the board. We haven't done the COLA inclusion here, I want to talk to council. So some departments have budgeted a 5% increase COLA, some haven't budgeted any. We, now that we've finished the collective bargaining, it seems like about 3-point, something, 3.3 for the, a few of the unions. The police are much higher than that on based on previous COLAs, the clerks are at 5%. I think 3% is about, and it's about a $75,000, but that'll be offset a bit. We haven't done the full math, but you're looking at around 50, 75,000, but no changes to the benefit calculations, because that's already based on a 3%.
Yep.
If you wanted to go to 2%, we could get you, you know, for the, for the non-union employees. If you wanted to look at a 2% raise, instead of the 3% at 75,000, you know, I don't know, what did we do, did we do the budgeting with the 2%?
Yes, we did, yep, it's, it's roughly about 50, around 50,000 for the 2%, it's about 75 for the 3. But the number here is including, is as if we had, we were going to give employees the 3% as of July 1st.
So the increases are already built into the, the individual budgets, is what you're saying?
No, no.
Or, oh, I'm sorry, don't.
They're built into the benefits.
Just for the benefits.
The benefits conclude that you do a 3% COLA increase for non-union, and that you approved every new hire request from the departments.
No, but I mean, so the 3% COLA is in the budget?
No, it's not, yeah, we haven't built that in to current, because some have, and I was looking for, kind of get council guidance on this. I think 3% is the right level because of inflation, other union agreements being over sometimes substantially show, so, and about the 75,000 total price point. But I would say some departments have requested increases already, so it wouldn't, it'd probably be around like the 50 to 75,000 new in this budget that I'd be able to bring next Tuesday. But I can also bring you a 2% option on what that would do to benefits, and, and a 1% or a 0% option as well. But, so we don't really have a, that hasn't been ironed out yet.
So I don't know, but I, I would like to say, I would like to say 2, 3, and 4. If we could see what the difference is in that, with the, the, the percentage, the taxes, the benefits, everything.
And we'll work with the department directors to double confirm, like, who built those into their budgets already, because there was a little bit of that already going on, so we just kind of lined over the benefits as a 3, just so you could see it, but we'll get those options for next Tuesday.
Thank you.
Anything else on benefits?
Can we just have a quick break?
Me too. I'll raise you, Tammy.
I don't want to stand up for a while.
She's got a head start.
She's got a head start.
Fifty-five hundred, it's also over here with question marks, was it not completed?
Sorry, what was that?
The Moore Center roof on the question mark.
Nate, if you can stop moving around so much, please.
I don't, I'm getting seasick.
So on the fiscal year FY twenty-four page, you see that the Moore Center roof replacement is at a hundred fifty thousand five hundred dollars. We've only spent on the actual expenditure sheet that you got, a hundred forty thousand dollars. And I couldn't check how much was left on the roof, so I wasn't sure if we still had to pay the ten thousand five hundred dollars or if it only costs a hundred forty thousand dollars.
Okay, so the work is done, you're just reconciling?
Well, I don't know if the work is done yet. But Jim's out, so I don't know.
Jim's on vacation.
But so if we still have to spend the ten thousand five hundred dollars, it's ARPA money that's already allocated, but
Okay.
It is only a hundred forty thousand dollars, it's ten thousand five hundred more we have to allocate.
So at most, that's going to be ten five?
Yeah.
Nate, could you go to the live Excel spreadsheet so I can just show you what this would mean to the budget?
Thank you.
If we were to tag this, let's say we just did everything, it's roughly four hundred thousand, including the interest. And we just said, we're going to tag as much in the budget with ARPA as possible, like just so you can see what it'll do to the bill rate with four hundred thousand.
If we can see that.
Much better, thank you.
Could you bring that over here?
There we go, you can increase.
Thank you.
Discover where eighteen, what, I don't remember what was before.
Eighteen oh three.
Even changes your average resident rates.
Well, this one's a four. And this.
Yeah, let's see what it does to.
Can you scroll down a little bit to average?
Oh, the average, yes.
Thank you.
So it went from three seventy for residential to three fourteen and went effort get wet, the commercial.
So capital improvements, though, you only have one point seven million in there, you've got a hundred and eighty. You've got. I was just looking at one point seven million, but there was one point eight million that was requested. So we'll get to that, but the ARPA funds wouldn't be used to cover the non.
Yeah, some of the capitals are either not ARPA level, or they're in a category that I think that we might want to hold and consider as part of the future funding process. And I mentioned that in my management request.
So when you put, when you put this in here, the four hundred, whatever the ARPA money was that you just put in there, that's for things that are already included in the budget? Okay.
So that's the question, you're like, put three hundred thousand, let's say we want to hold, these are the things that I really think we should do in current budget, you know, around the three hundred, three hundred thousand level, which would leave us about a hundred thousand left over. Now I can tag roads, I can work with Adam next week, and I can tag a bunch of roads with those, that rest of the hundred thousand, seven thousand for a new set of ground project. Or we can keep that as a potential for a Norton Park improvement matched to some other funding. Or we can, you know, or we could, you know.
Okay.
More than sunroof, that kind of piece, but.
But these, but these items that you've listed are already in the budget?
Already in the budget.
Okay.
And we, but I haven't tagged them ARPA yet, so if we decide to go forward with the ones that are listed here.
Yep.
We can pull about three hundred thousand off the rolls.
Okay.
If you want me to, when Adam gets back from vacation, I talk to him about roads, we can pull down to four hundred thousand and that will get to that level. Or we can keep that separate hundred thousand for a potential future Norton Park
Okay.
upgrade married to a few other things, so.
So just a quick overview, I was looking at some of the revenues, I think there's potential for higher revenues. More of the Lexi's tax, I already talked to them about it.
Great.
There's also. There was the interest, the regular interest.
So you're just making money appear out of there?
Well, not really, because I've got.
Yeah, that's I too.
The regular interest seems like it should be higher at the rate that we've only had six thousand budgeted. I think we could probably at four point two percent, it's going to be quite a bit more. And then also, there's no interest to budgeted for the the ten one thirty, which would be the tax account, that should have some money in it from the interest that we collect on overdue taxes. That's where that should go.
Gotcha.
So I think you could probably, that's quite a bit more. The other thing is, is that I don't think that the TIF is accounted for particularly in these numbers.
Okay.
Okay, so and I talked to Mike and Nate about that as well. So I just want everyone to kind of be like, oh, this is the number, when I think there definitely needs to be some adjustments to it.
Absolutely.
The TIF needs to be significant.
But with the increased revenues.
Yeah, please, any notes?
You think she'd done this before, huh?
So I guess I'll hold there, just what are your thoughts on what I've specified to draw down for ARPA for next cycle, and do we want to consider this Norton Park idea, or do you want, you know, or do you want me to come back with Adam and Rhodes and you can make a decision?
Can we come back and see where we are after we've looked at the entire budget? Because I'm looking at the capital improvements and I, I just, if, once we see where we really are, when we fix revenues and we do some other changes and we add.
Sure.
It would, it would be just really good to see what, what we wanted to do at that point.
And we have a week break on no budgeting between, or between the council meeting on this, and if we need to add another meeting that week, that's kind of why we held it there, I wanted to finalize next Tuesday, and then we have a week, and then we have approvals. So if you want to add that third meeting, or it's going to have to be a really long meeting next Tuesday.
I would like to have that third meeting, because again, we're talking a little bit about this, but I, I haven't, there's still so much that we don't know on here, and
Yep.
I haven't wrapped my arms around this, this budget to have a good understanding of what's what.
Yeah, I think we should probably plan on a third.
Yeah.
It'll be next week.
No, next week is a Tuesday, we have that scheduled already, we'd add one the following week.
I think.
One or two.
It's like hanging out with you guys so much.
Well, we are awesome. This under the table is awesome, you speak for your end, you seem nice.
I think at one.
Tammy's a hoot, I'm having a blast.
I think at one point in one of these meetings, we have to decide what we're trying to get to. Instead of, you know, four hundred thousand dollars, just took average Mr. and Elsworth, Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth bill down forty.
Keep talking, Steve, go ahead.
Mister and Mrs. Ellsworth, forty-two dollars and one cent. Are we trying to get to the same rate as last year? What, I think, I think the council needs to think about that, is where are we trying to get instead of poking and choosing and yanking and crying?
I, I would like to, but the thing is, is that I want to know the consequences of my actions.
Okay, right, but are we trying to get, I mean, I would love to have the same bills as last year. What, is that, is that what the group thinks we're trying to do? I think, I think we need to talk about that at some point in one of these meetings, you know, what is the objective here?
I agree, I want to get through, I need the context, I still need the context, and then is it flat for the year, is it, we're ten percent of the school, so is it ten percent for across the board? I mean, we don't, then, then run the scenarios, what does it mean? What do we cut in order to get there? Be, I mean, the scenario running is incredible.
Yeah, and, yeah, but we've looked at another meeting, my hope was to get to that level, but there was some outstanding things we talked about here and there, so. But at the same time, it's, to your point, Michelle, like, yeah, having over, and like, how do you get there? Because you, you know, you can't, I could lie to you and tell you that the benefits are going to cost more and this and that, but you're probably going to have to cut a bunch of roads to get there, because you're probably going to have to not invest in some pretty substantial items, or maybe Tammy can. Or we draw down reserves, or we draw, you know, this.
Or put them off until we know what the fund balance is and what our.
Have a capital plan.
Bond for certain things.
I, I think that's where I'm struggling the most, is I'm, I I just don't know, like I said, what the consequences of the actions, I mean, I'd love to get to not have a mill rate increase, but what is that going to mean, and what is that going to take to do that? I would like to do it, but I don't want to do it to the detriment of the city and the services we provide and the people that work here, I, I just. I'm like you, I have to have context.
And we're, and we are not going to have the reconciliation context, which is super important in some ways, because, which indicates encumbrance. So like the million foreign roads you didn't, we didn't do last year, you know, is that an encumbering possibility or not?
Yeah, we're not going to know.
Something we won't know, and to your point from last meeting, maybe it's a bonding conversation, so we're going to have to.
But the, the thing is, is that once we get that, I mean, it's, we have the, the general fund, and whatever is unencumbered is, is, is unencumbered, and so once we get the numbers, then we can, we can at that point say, we're going to take money from general fund, because this is what it is, this is what it should be. And this year, we're going to move it and we're going to put it in these different areas for next year, or we're going to catch up on some things that we weren't able to budget for, because we didn't know how much money we had. I mean, it's not like it's a dead-end issue, if it doesn't get encumbered this year, we can fix it.
Well, or.
Once we have the numbers.
Or the, or it says that you don't, you did so much undesigned spending on things that were not budgeted for in previous years, that there like can't be any encumbrance.
There can't be any encumbrance, right, and then we start fresh next year. But I, I just, yeah, I'm so.
Yeah, so you don't want to, you know, we've got to tax appropriately to what spending's going to be, and that's kind of where we're at.
And I don't want to increase the mill rate to, for certain projects, if you know, six months down the road, we didn't have to increase the mill rate, because we had the money to do them.
But this year, I don't, I, I realize it's hard, but it, let's face it, we've got to make some decisions before we have all the, all the cards on the table.
Absolutely, yeah.
The decisions have got to be made long before the cards are on the table.
And I'm excited for Tammy's, I can, you know, and keep the critiques coming, like, this is a little.
This is awesome.
I know, I mean, at least we've got this, this is, this is so great.
And let me, and you know, again, this is, to go through your, like, critique of myself, it's just, I felt like my areas for discretionary cuts were kind of, you know, not going to make a huge difference in Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth. But I felt they're important to tighten our belt where we, I feel like we can, but you may choose that we're not getting a big bang for a buck out of those, so, but let me go through. If it's okay with you, we'll, I'll, I'll tag ARPA, we'll talk about the conversation with Rhodes and what the rest could be spent on Norton Park, have a little more information for next. We'll go to assessing, which is, I think, quick. This is page thirty-one.
Page numbers are so helpful.
And you're going to see the.
I just put them in there.
Nate, they're awfully nice.
How many times am I going to say that, but Nate, you are the man of the hour.
Larry's got a new request, my adjustment is a, and again, is a fifteen to twenty percent reduction in training and professional services, talk to Larry about that, he can see the numbers within that. Not a huge amount, that's it there. You can see that reflected to the points on, you know, what the department request was, and then you look in training, it's now thirteen sixty from seventeen hundred, it's now thirteen hundred from thirty-eight hundred. And that was a bigger request, that's what he had last year and about what he spent, Matt and him worked to bring it up, I talked to him again, he said it was Matt wanted to raise it up.
He's an arborist again.
We're going to go back down to what you originally said. So, you know, sit with that, if we can go next to page, I guess, was there any questions in assessing? Great, city clerk budget, page thirty-nine, and you'll see some of the things Larry had for his pieces. The new request summary was, was staff training here. Again, just in keeping in line with all staff pieces, recommend reducing the training line by twenty percent, also reducing the office supplies to two thousand twenty, two thousand four fifty. I should also note that there's a couple of things here, you know, is on employee appreciation, and I'm kind of looking for council guidance here. There's a few departments that, like, for example, there's, you know, a clerks' week, and that we, that we used the office supplies for kind of clerks' week, employee appreciation for that week. There's three or four departments that sort of use certain budget items like that for an employee appreciation in the realm of like eight hundred to a thousand over the year. But, you know, we have eighteen departments, and then a lot of the others pay for it out of pocket. So I'm trying to figure out fairness, this isn't a huge line item, I could increase everybody, and then also make a separate line that says employee appreciation, because I feel like, you know, if you're going to have a party, or you're going to have employee appreciation, it should be designated, it should be fair across departments. But I want to know council's thoughts on, on that, that piece, and if there should be sort of an employee appreciation. Or.
Isn't, there's nothing in joint office for that?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
No, there's no.
So like when you have your employee appreciation barbecue, where does that come out of?
So that's Carrie, Carrie has an overall office budget line for that. At the departments are, some departments using their miscellaneous expense for their, you know, separate, just for their department and employee appreciation party, some people are using it for like the week area, some people are using it for the dinner for their employees. In my budget, or in my, my contract, I have twenty-five hundred dollars to, you know, for employee appreciation type things, I've actually cut that in my budget, but, um, as part of this twenty percent cut, but it, you know, I, it's, it's come up from other staff, and I just, I want to feel like we're consistent, and we say, if you want to do employee appreciation, it's going to come out of your own pocket, or every department has a line, and, and the council approves it for employee appreciation, we're not just pulling that from specific designated spending on individual departments.
I would hate to see employees paying for their own employee appreciation.
You mean literally out of their own pockets?
Yeah.
That's not appreciation, but.
No, but.
Buy yourself a present, you pay for it.
The department head paying for something for like the third employee, so like, it's easy for me to do it out of my pocket when I have one employee, but like, Adam can't do that for Highway where he's got eighteen employees, so. I mean, I would love to have a budget line I have, so I'm not paying anything out of my pocket, but it's not as big of a deal, where like, for Adam, it would be a considerable.
Where does it shop in the budget now?
So, some are pulling it from office supplies, some are pulling it from miscellaneous, and there's only about three or four that are, are doing that, you know, as part of this process. But then I realized there's some departments that would like to, or feel like it should be a general expense approved by Carrie, and you go through her piece. But to me, it's a piece like, for spending money in this type of activity, I'm, I'm for employee appreciation, state government Massachusetts, not allowed to buy food for anybody. See, we were never allowed to get everybody around the conference table and have a lunch event when somebody went away for retirement, and I felt, so we had to do it all out of pocket. I know, the private industry, they do, they spend a lot of money in this kind of employee appreciation. So I'm kind of looking for, you know, do we need to have a line item, should it be in individual departments at a certain level based on the department size, and I build that into the budget.
Yeah, I don't think it should come out of office, but.
Yeah, well, I just, I think generally, the more accurate the budget is reflecting what the money's being spent upon, you know. To me, that makes sense if it's not office supplies, right, and I get it, right, it's like, you're using it, you know, the money's there.
Right.
But it's, it's, it's just more accurate and, you know, transparent to, if, if there's a, you know, if departments are, and again, I'm supportive of employee appreciation, and I think it's great, and, but but let's just be honest, that that's what that money's for rather than staplers.
Right.
And I have no problem, I don't know if it's, I guess the question is, is that something that's necessary, you know, for this budget cycle, considering, oh, is it going to make that much more work for you, everyone, or is it something that we say, okay, use your office supplies this year to, you know, throw this event, but twenty twenty-six budget, we're going to reallocate those dollars.
Yeah, I'd, I'd rather have it be transparent, and just, we can create a line in the department, ten seconds with Nate, and.
Yeah, if that's easier than, I think it makes sense to, to me.
We'll do, and it'll probably be in the rest of ten to fifteen thousand across City Hall, of like, this is your designated employees' spending, and that's, but again, that's an addition.
It'll, it'll be monitored, correct, so that, to ensure that it's not being overspent, and some people using it, some not using it, or.
Or using it on things that we wouldn't find, you know, it might be fine for dinner, or a clerks' week, which is great, and, but just going out to, yeah, the casino and putting it all on, you know, red.
I think to that point, I think it makes sense to have it under the HR department, that she has the bucket, and then she can work with department heads on allocating and what's appropriate.
Makes a lot of sense.
And yeah, and then that's kind of monitored, this is what we're doing, so it's.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Okay.
And then reducing, and then reducing this.
Ah, that's true, she's going to have.
Yeah, and that's, that's the other thing, is we have a joint office budget, and then we have individual up, so trying to get a little more, less, you know.
It makes sense to keep it in one spot.
Well, and it seems like an HR role.
Right.
Yep, okay.
Can I ask a question?
You just did.
No, you made your quota.
Enterprise funds aren't in the joint office. So if I wanted to do an employee appreciation for my people.
Too bad.
Yeah, that.
Do I carry a line? Because I don't have a line for that, I don't, we haven't done one, but if I wanted to do that, wouldn't I have to carry a separate line in the enterprise fund budget?
You don't do that now?
Water budget, no, but that doesn't mean I'm not willing to do. Uh, what we, honestly, what we do is we take all our can and bottle money, and we pool it, and then when we have enough money, we go buy ones for all of us, or something like that.
That's good, too.
But, you know, that doesn't mean I wouldn't want to have like a cookout once a year or something for everybody.
Right now, your employee benefits are coming on the employee benefits line.
Oh, it is?
But that's not.
Well, I, I think, is it?
No.
It should.
It's all in my, all my benefits are in my budget, group dynamics is in my budget, everything's in my budget.
Yeah, we want to make sure that they're not double counted.
It's not.
No, it's not.
So, that's why I'm just, if this ends up being what we do.
Yep.
I would make sure that, I would create a line in my budget, and I would make sure Reggie has a line created in his budget.
Yep.
Funded at whatever the appropriate level is that we decide. And then, I mean, I think honestly, you would still, we would still check in with Carrie and say, hey, this is what our plan is for our employee appreciation money, so it's trackable for everybody to, to capture that piece, but for us.
I know, like, what is that noise?
Sorry, but for us, you know, for the enterprise funds, you know, we would have to carry it separately.
Four or five guys, it'd only be a couple hundred dollars.
I know, it's not going to be, it's going to be insignificant, it's not going to be a significant amount of money, I know, but.
And I think, again, it's part of just.
I talk with my hands.
Just don't put them on the table, that's all.
But, you know, obviously, we, we're not going to come out of the general fund, so.
Yep.
It would have to be captured in the individual enterprise fund budgets.
Okay, so we'll, we'll do a policy procedure with HR that they kind of approves it, but it sits to a certain level for each department to be able to do employee level. And again, not a huge thing, but I feel like fairness and just transparency is, that's our principles here. Now we can, if we're good on clerk, we can go to city manager's budget.
Page?
Forty-seven is the next, we're going to just kind of keep going one after the next, we're not going to switch around too much, you know. So, the new request summary kind of before I arrived was, I think, the, they created a new position for communications director. Then potentially backfilled the administrative assistant in my department. It's kind of two things here, one is, you know, I, I think the communications director position should move forward, I think Mora is already doing a lot of that work, and it's an enormous value add, it's kind of in some ways like Carrie to like internal, external and internal communications, like Ellsworth, I think, is one of the premier cities in Maine, and we need sort of a marketing communications piece that's really driving positive information flow to the press and developers, and people will really see how much opportunity there is in this city. I'm not recommending backfilling my administrative assistant in the near term. And again, this gets back to another budget line item we're currently paying for, but hasn't been budgeted, and doesn't have a line item that I'm creating, which is a stipend line item. Carrie and I have done the math, and it's, you know, roughly around a hundred thousand dollars a year on previous city manager approved or council stipends that are, you know, for extra work, or need to come in this day, it's kind of, in some ways, and and that's what it's currently at, so that's what's been spent. Putting it in the budget at that level again, just because, again, kind of like the benefits piece, this is what we are doing every single year in this category, and and we should budget for it. The second piece is, you know, throughout this budget, I've sort of eliminated except for some finance direct, finance roles, and I'd like to get to that tonight, because I think in some ways it's budget neutral, but, and the HR piece, that's, three of the other administrative assistants, I've kind of put a hold on those until I can do more analysis, and they said, you know, there's a request for, and I've talked to the department directors about this, but there's a request for a general assistance, kind of half share with Carrie, but we currently have a person who has general assistance in their job description. And, you know, there's reasons that, you know, that's not being, and it's now stipended to a different employee, but that might be outside of like the union agreement, and wastewater, water, their, you know, public works is looking for you know, somebody to handle admin, reconciliation of accounts, but that previously been handled in different parts of the office, and, you know, and now with the union, it's a piece that I'm going to have to figure out as an organization, there used to be a public works director in the organization, I feel like that actually is something that's very valuable, there is some strategic alignment between those areas that I think aren't happening, that might be under consideration, might not, but the people that are currently handling it might be able to, but. So I'm pulling, I'm requesting that we don't move forward with these admin assistants that are shared across departments and areas, and that I have a little more time to really analyze the organization and what these job descriptions would be, whether they can be filled by current employees, based on your current union contracts and positions. But that I also have an additional hundred and fifty thousand dollars in what I'm calling a stipend, but would really be potentially stipends for sidebar agreements, could be elevating certain people for new responsibilities, could be hiring one or two new employees, and could not be. We could lower that to a hundred thousand. But that's sort of where I'm at with the new staffing requests, is we're not in a position, but looking at with the FTE counts, looking at the stresses in this organization, it's pretty clear to me that we need additional employees to really handle the growth of this organization. I'm not quite ready to commit to exactly how that's going to be done, and I want to come back to council budget for additional potential staff, and then decide at that point where we can go.
Are we sure that the numbers in the payroll line items aren't already including those stipend amounts?
Yep.
Okay. And you said earlier too, that you have not pulled out the requests from the department heads for adminis, so that could be, you have.
Yeah, so, so the rest of the budget is my, and it's my manager's adjust, will.
It doesn't.
In other departments, except for HR. Yeah, I did pull out the GA, I did pull out the public works, I don't know, I think there was one other one in there.
Oh, did I misunderstand?
Code.
Code is, I didn't, that wasn't a, I didn't consider that a new request, I, I think I left code in there. Two reasons, the short-term rentals, I think, one, but the other is, the two that are up there are about to be out all the time, we're growing, we need somebody in the office to handle code requests when they come in. I think it's having that piece staffed up for new business is important, but, yeah, I pulled out some of the other pieces or delayed like hiring in some areas to free up funds.
Charlie, does this, the, I'm thinking about the Parks and Rec Director proposal in Arbor Tree Master, whatever, is that at all accounted for in any of this budget?
That's, I'd say this would also be.
That's fall under the stipend?
Yeah, it's, and that's kind of was.
TBD, yeah.
It's exactly my thinking, I'm not sure, quite sure organizationally where that person would fall, I think Michelle mentioned previously on like implementation, like, you know, the organization, the work's important too, but like, what are they going to fund, there is a bunch of that park stuff to be done. But I, I feel like the tree warden, you know, Adam's got somebody who's a certified arborist, that could be in that category, but do we really need a tree warden? Or can I continue to be in that category?
You really still want to give up your tree warden?
That is true.
There's a badge and a hat.
I mean, and is there, you know, like other areas in the recreation commission we can cut to cover some of that cost?
Yeah, so again, this gives me the kind of flexibility to look at the organization, and Nick, I'd love to tell you that I can take the hundred and two FTEs that we have now and reor, I've done this with a bunch of other organizations, it never works out like that. We will be at a similar level of stress and drowning in work to what we were at, you know, two new positions will help, but you're never able to kind of recreate the.
So like with the, with the, the grants and that stuff, is that being pulled back, pulled out of public works and put back into finance?
That's what I'd like to do, and we can go to that next, if you'd like me to talk about that.
No, that's okay, because we're actually running out of time, but I mean, those are the types of things too, is, it seems like there's a bit of chaos with what some departments are having to do, talking to some, I mean.
Yeah, it seemed like in, you know.
Just an adventure.
Yeah, that.
Just an adventure, you know.
Yeah, I mean, the public works director that we had, she, you know, she was overseeing all of the grants, and I just think that should be, I mean, if we're going to add anywhere, add it to finance, and have the finance department take care of finances. And anything that is part of the audit should be in finance, and it shouldn't be in public works and.
If you want to go to eighty-five, I can talk about that, let's go to eighty-five in finance, I actually do budget this, and I think in some ways it can be somewhat cost neutral, because to your point, Michelle, I think some of the public works requests and what, in some ways, things Tammy and others in finance were handling for them, grants management, procurement, you know, policies. Had, and then it stopped being handled through finance over to, and, but it has to be done, so. Yeah, Adam and, and everybody is kind of trying to do it, but Woodin and Kern is doing a lot of that piece, Janet, some are doing better than others, but there's nobody overseeing. So my finance, there's no new request previously, except for an upgrade to salary, but my manager's adjustment is increasing the payroll to three thirty-eight, one forty-one. Would include a permanent ten percent raise for the deputy, the deputy finance director and the assistant deputy treasurer positions who are doing the Lord's work and have been, you know, are really keeping everything going on, and and it would also include a new hire, I think we'd go with. And, uh, and it would also include a new hire. Um, I think we'd go with another assistant deputy treasurer, but that person, and there might be somebody actually within the organization that would be just focus on grants management from a holistic perspective, um, grant chasing, ensuring we're getting the billing back when people, you know, the reimbursement policies and procurement policies. Um, and then that leaves one person on accounts payable or two people on accounts payable, accounts receivable through the week. And this is an area where I have a lot of interest and focus and can pay for itself quickly. If we're getting, there's some, it's a once in a lifetime opportunity and this is my memo on this piece in terms of the federal funding out there for big, big, big projects, hundreds of millions of dollars projects. I want to be as soon as possible chasing that kind of thing. I've got some good contacts at the Kennedy School Government, uh, that I might be able to do some fellowships to help us really dial in the kind of best policies here in coordination with an actual on the ground person that's really focused on that, can take pressure off all the people that are doing that and like you said, eliminate the chaos. In addition to that, I'm asking for a decrease of the professional services budget from a hundred and twenty thousand to sixty thousand. Because if we had the extra staffer and a finance director, it's a little more high level. We can create institutionally what we're paying currently to do for auditing and accounting externally, but that's not an institutional change. So it's almost budget neutral even within here. And then, um, we add all the grant money that's come in and we'll hold them accountable. We'll have a grants personnel say, hey, Charlie, and council, this is how much grants we got last year for this many, this is how much we're this year and I feel like that could be an enormous value add.
I would a hundred percent agree with you with that one. That's, this is, I mean, if we're gonna get our finances back in order and we're gonna get our bond rating increased, you know, back to where it, it was and even better. And, and if we're gonna really be able to, you shouldn't have an audit that lasts you more than a month tops and comes with no management, um, letter.
All right.
And, and I mean, that's, that's where we, that's where we want to get to. And you're only gonna do that with staff that's overseeing the finances of the entire city and not just pieces.
Piece meal.
It's growing in complexity, you know, and again, a lot of municipalities and we want to meet this moment. And that's.
I think this is, this is a hundred percent economically sensible, makes a lot of sense.
Also free up me to do a little different thing. Not that I haven't enjoyed this process.
Absolutely, I mean, yeah.
And just give, yeah, I think it's.
Kind of smell.
Maybe it'll give the council great information to make some of these decisions that we're being asked to make. So I, I would agree.
Yeah, I'm very supportive of it.
Could I, could I just go back to?
Yep.
What you had said, um, about your discretionary position, positions. I think it would be a missed opportunity if we didn't grant those and here's why. You clearly had said that, you know, you're not quite sure of all the moving parts yet, but you know you need that spot and, um, and you've got to move some things around. And I would, I would hate to strap your abilities and what you've accomplished so far by not giving the flexibility of moving that around as you suggest.
Yeah, and for me, it's, I think I mentioned to somebody, it's kind of like when you buy a new house and you, I, I did have. I had kind of came in here and, you know, you want to change everything. Kitchen should be over here and I want to do this. You kind of have to live with it for a while to really know. I think I thought a deputy city manager like stat, like I'm gonna have just so much. And that may still be under consideration, but there's a lot of leadership talent in this organization already that might be worthy of an elevation into roles of that type and others that would be more cost effective than hiring a new FTE at the hundred K level. Um, it might be, you know, so I feel like I've got a, but that's gonna take time to go through that. And I think the hundred and fifty thousand for those types of things to really relieve pressure on specific perks to the organization will, will be a big value add. And I would come back to council. It's not something I just move on.
That was one question.
I, I am at this point uncomfortable with three thirty-eight plus two hundred and fifty in one year. And this is just payroll, so benefits would be on top.
Yeah, but the benefits are already accounted for in the, um, in the, in the benefits areas. That's not gonna increase, but yeah.
So the benefits already has these increases in it?
Yeah, they drop a bit if we were to not move forward with that. The finance piece is year one budget neutral because of the, um, the reduction in professional services and really like.
Well, you're reducing it by sixty thousand, but you've got three thirty-eight.
Yeah, but the previous, um, budgeted. I thought this was across the board. No, what page is finance?
Eighty-six.
Or eighty-five is where you outlined. So we don't, we, so I'm just saying that.
Yes, the payroll goes up from the department request is two sixty-nine, it goes to three thirty-eight.
Yep.
So that's the, the jump isn't a three thirty-eight request, it's a two sixty-nine.
Okay, thank you. That is helpful. So the difference is?
And that's just.
To seventy to forty is the.
It's a, uh, a bump for two and the addition of one assistant deputy treasurer. And the savings, actually, we're, in terms of, we're actually down on my manager address on this piece because we're not gonna spend a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year on professional services outside of the.
Okay, so this is why we stop at nine o'clock is I thought it was an increase of three thirty-eight. It's an increase to three thirty-eight, which, got it. I'm feeling better now about that.
Yeah, no worries.
I thought it was like a seven, six hundred thousand dollar increase.
I apologize. We'll add another, another piece of this and this might be a good place to pencil down a bit. Give you guys some time to check it out.
Yeah, that'd be good too.
We'll make some notes on, on things already.
So we need fixed TIF, does that have any increase of?
So next week, cause it's nine o'clock, um, next week, we're gonna have the adjustments that you guys are talking about, the TIF, the revenue and all of that stuff to get kind of a even more clear picture of where we are.
Yep.
We can take the rest of this week to look through this and, and probably have questions too of what things are as we go through.
Do you want me to hold, you know, I could ask for department heads to be a certain amount of them to be here next Tuesday and then a certain amount the next, whatever date we schedule for that following week.
If we have a schedule of what we're gonna, what we're, what we're gonna look through, um, yeah.
So we, maybe we'll look to reorganize that.
I don't know. What do you guys think?
My personal thought is if you could get everybody here, I realize it's taxing, but we've taxed everybody to work on the finances. And if you could get all department heads together for maybe one or two meetings, that there could be some synergies that we'll miss if not everybody's in the room.
And I, you know, I've had these conversations with every department head except the ones that are on vacation. Anyhow, I'd encourage, I can bring it up, I encourage them to, you know, there was some pushback on a few things. Leases on vehicles that I, we're thinking, and we'll get to there and, but you should hear both sides of it. So, so having, um, having them here for that, um, whether it's as a group twice or maybe, I'll figure that out. Or maybe we schedule certain things we'll discuss this time.
Should we plan on, so that week where we have the, we're gonna have another meeting, the week of the tenth or the fourteenth? Should we do another Tuesday to be consistent? That's the eleventh.
That's the, um, election.
Is that important?
Tony was saying yes.
So we have on next Tuesday.
Yeah, we could say the twelfth, next week, the following Wednesday.
Yeah, Wednesday.
I, I think we're gonna need at least two because it's gonna be really hard to get this done.
So just so you know, um, next week is like graduation week, so I'm probably not gonna be in sometime. My daughter's coming in from Tennessee. So yeah, it's those kid things again that keep getting.
No, excuse, excuse.
Anyhow, I would.
Six-four, is that what we're talking about?
So four is our next one.
We're already meeting on the four.
Six-four, I'm suggesting six-twelve.
Six-twelve.
And then, cause we're voting potentially on six-seventeen.
Yeah, six-twelve works for me.
Are we, I, I mean, not that I wanna, I know it's two meetings. If Tim's gonna miss them both, but can we have two meetings next week? I mean, we had a very large budget that we have to vote on.
Yeah, we can do, if you want to do, um.
Do the six.
Tuesday, Thursday? It works for you, Tim.
Oh, I won't be here.
Tim, Tim. Or do we want to do two, we can't do two the next week because of elections, right?
Well, we could do Wednesday, Thursday.
Oh, okay.
Wednesday's planning board next week, right?
When, yeah, we can't do Wednesday night.
Oh, we could, we can do it here.
No, we can't do the twelfth because that's, what, are you talking next week or, or the twelfth? When's planning board?
The fifth is planning board.
Oh, okay. But we could do Thursday. Do you have anything going Thursday?
We're at Thursday, the thirteenth now.
The sixth.
The sixth, yeah.
Sixth. And I won't be here for the sixth.
Okay.
Or the fifth.
But we could do the twelfth and thirteenth then the week after? If we need, I mean, we could, but we could set them aside and if we don't need to do the thirteenth, we.
Yeah, I could do the twelfth. I couldn't do the thirteenth, but.
What about Monday, the tenth? I know we said we couldn't do the eleventh.
Are they getting ready for elections though?
I'm setting out.
Not in this room, are they?
Yeah.
In this room?
Yeah, the ward four.
This is a ward.
I mean, next week is gonna be the week you guys are gonna want to try and do a double meeting, honestly.
You guys want to come and try and come back tomorrow night? Okay.
Do you need, uh, those timed off for that or out for workshop?
Emergency budget workshop.
Now, the only other thing, it doesn't give you time to get your stuff together to get us some pages.
Right, Saturday?
No. Put my foot down on, I put my foot down on Saturdays.
I'm gonna miss that one.
And Friday nights. I am not.
I mean, like you guys, I'm serving the president, my bed and overloads, so.
And everyone over lords and ladies.
Yes.
Yes.
So we said no to the sixth.
Can we do the sixth?
The Thursday? So we do meet Tuesday and then Thursday?
I mean, I wouldn't be here, but can we do the third?
You can tell me how it is. That's next Monday.
I can do the.
I can do the third.
I can do the third. The third, fourth?
So the third and fourth.
That would be good.
Yeah.
Kick the week off.
Fourth and then the following Wednesday.
Third, fourth, then so.
And the twelfth.
Third, fourth and twelfth.
Can somebody send?
Yeah, someone from the city.
Can somebody send us in by?
We will send that tomorrow.
Okay.
I'll enjoy our two days off.
And then just think, once the budget's passed, ta-da.
Yeah, like you will not.
We got all kinds of time for workshops.
Reconciliation.
Trust me, there are other things on the.
So we're doing the third and the fourth?
Yeah, and the twelfth.
Twelfth, six P M.
And the twelfth.
Fourth, twelfth. I'll send it out tomorrow morning.
Six to ten.
What did I hear about the twelfth earlier?
I heard that six to ten.
No, twelfth is, uh, there's nothing on the twelfth. Yeah, fifth is planning board.
Oh, we're just, so we're not doing the twelfth?
Yes. We're doing three, four and five.
Three, four, twelve.
He's saying we're not doing the twelfth.
No, the third, fourth and twelfth are set. Steve asked about moving the planning board. The planning board's on the fifth when you guys were talking about doing a Wednesday meeting.
Okay.
So it's not in consideration anymore.
Thank you. Thank you for translating.
Three, four and twelve.
Thank you.
And thank you for this book. This is awesome.
I could tell you, I'm impressed with like the quality. They've got these little things.
That's good, that's a good tablet.
Good tablet. You should have seen the squad up there standing around and printing.
Yeah. There might be a picture of that.
They look like from the office, you know, when they're all like, the monkeys are hitting.
They were like.[1786.71]